O'clock and I will be calling the Manoa Neighborhood Board to order for August seventh, twenty twenty four. Anson, can I get a roll call to confirm if we have quorum at this point?
Okay. You want to call your name, please say here. Hey Zane.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Bozal. Nagaji.
Here.
Fukamoto.
Here.
Lumen.
Here.
Lee. Lee. Cough. Cough. Tong. Tong. Diane. Yeah, I see you. Yep. Moilen.
Here.
Kwanu. Kwanu. Fox. Fox. Okay. And Mishreki.
Here. Mishreki's here.
Okay. Okay, uh, we have. We only have eight. We don't have quorum.
Okay, that's fine. We'll be taking the agenda out of order in the meantime until hopefully we have um enough of a quorum in attendance. So first off, let's start with the first responders, monthly reports. Do we have somebody from the Honolulu Fire Department?
There you go. Yes. Hi, right here. Thank you. Thank you for having me. Uh, I'm Erica Fernandez. I'm a firefighter three over at the Manoa Fire Station. Um, so the statistics, the statistics for the month of July, uh, twenty twenty four. Um, there were zero, zero structure fires, zero wildland brush fires, um, zero nuisance calls, zero cooking fires, and there were five activated alarms. Um, for emergencies, we had fifty-six medical calls, zero motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians. Four, four motor vehicle crash collisions, one mountain rescue, zero ocean rescues, and two hazardous material incidences. Um, as far as the fire safety tip for this month, it is back to school fire safety. And it's about educating students on what they can do to stay safe during the school year. Um, and it uh, about, and it's important in what's overlooked. Call the students living away from home should take a few time, few minutes to ensure that they're living in a fire safe environment. So not to overload outlets, keep lamps, light fixtures and light bulbs away from anything that can burn. Never use an extension cord with large appliances like a refrigerator. Cook only what's uh, cook only where it's allowed, uh, keeping the cooking area clean and free from anything that can burn. If a fire starts in a microwave, keep the door closed and the unplug, and unplug the unit. And if a disaster were to happen, knowing who to call and where, where to meet is important part of emergency planning for you and your family. Pick one main contact locally and one ca- contact out of town who may be easier to reach during a disaster. Uh, are there any questions?
Members of the board. Members of the community. Hearing, seeing, none. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Okay, thank you so much.
Next up, uh, do we have a representative from the Honolulu Police Department in attendance?
Yes, good evening, Lieutenant Miro at the Honolulu Police Department, District Seven, East Honolulu.
Yes.
All right, okay, so monthly statistics, motor vehicle thefts, we have four burglaries, we had five thefts, we had three.
Lieutenant. Your feed's cutting in and out, Lieutenant. Lieutenant. Lieutenant, are you there? Your feed's cutting in and out. Your connection's not that good.
Six thousand, yes. Okay, um. Word off. I was going to statistics. Yes. Yes.
Okay, it maybe, um, it looks like your feed's not doing so good. Maybe if you. We can hear you a little bit better. Maybe if you cut your video, uh, video feed for the time being, it might help with the audio.
Okay, how's that? Is that better?
I would hear you a little bit better now. If you could go back to your report again.
Okay. So the. Motor F four burglaries, five thefts at three unauthorized entry at the motor vehicle for. Total cost for service, six thousand four hundred and twelve. And our back to school safety tips and piggybacking with the fire department, uh, since it is back to school season. Just a couple of things. So things like bicycling, uh, since a growing of children are riding bikes to school. Uh, ensure that they wear a helmet, wear comfortable brightly colored clothing or reflective vests, and walk bikes across crosswalks. Children pedestrian safety tips to. Children are impulsive and may act without realizing the dangers around them such as roam across the street to see a friend, chase after. Children are often influenced by their peers. A child may assume that their. Friends are watching for potential moral show interact. And backpacks. So borders or stress. Have your child, help your sort through everything before packing up their backpack and see what can be left home for that day. Look for a backpack with compartments that can help distribute the weight or one of those new models with wheels or that your child can pull. And of course with backpacks, you said everything else, bright colors, that kind of stuff, reflective colors are helpful. And that's all I have for the tips.
Okay, uh, members of the board. Any questions for the Honolulu Police Department? Members of the community. Hearing, oh, uh, Elton, remember Fukamoto, go ahead.
Uh, uh, Chair, thank you. Um, I would, I, I actually have a question for. Uh, Ms. Fernandez of the Fire Department, so um. I, I will ask that question after your. The HPD is, is finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any questions for the Honolulu Police Department? I'm still not seeing any. So Lieutenant, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Fernandez from the uh, Fire Department, are you still there? I see your video. Okay, yes, you can hear you. Elton, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Uh, Ms. Fernandez, you said that um, we should have one emergency contact. Here and one emergency contact out of state, something like that.
Um, that was this month's fire C A T tip. It was uh, geared towards educating students. Um. Uh, what my belief is because of our location being in Manoa, um, it was, this is geared towards uh, U H students.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you very much. So. At this time, I was notified that we do have quorum now. So we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the election of officers and confirmation of board details. Uh, it looks like we don't have all of our board members in attendance at this point, but because of the importance of electing our officers. We will proceed accordingly and. If we nominate somebody who is not in attendance, so long as it's unopposed. And so long as they accept the nomination at a later time. You can't do that, Ellen?
I think you cannot nominate someone who's not in attendance.
That's fair.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, she's correct. If the person has to be here in order to be nominated for the, uh, for that office, so.
Could you go over who actually is here now that we have a poll?
Okay, um. Is okay, can I do another roll call? Is that okay?
By all means.
Okay. Is um, Bozal here?
Yes, here.
Okay, you're here. Okay, good. Is uh, Phil, is Lee here? Nope. Is cough here? Cough. Is Kwanu? Kwanu here? Patty?
Yes, here.
Okay. And is Fox here? Robert? Uh, so we have like two. We have ten uh, members here now. Yeah. Uh, Zane, you're here. Uh, Watson. Watson. Okay. Uh, Nagaji.
Here.
Fukamoto.
Here.
Lumen.
Still here.
Hey, Tong.
Here.
Moilen, still here?
Yes.
And Mishreki, you still here? Mishreki?
Sorry, it's the unmute button. Uh, yes, I'm here. Sorry about that.
Okay, yeah, we have uh, ten members now.
Great. Okay, so we have to move on to the election of officers at this point to serve. In their positions from August twenty twenty fourth, this meeting through June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. So the positions are Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary and Treasurer. And then there is also the discretion to add additional positions as needed. So first off, we will um, requesting for motions or nominations for the Chair position of the Neighborhood Board.
Hi everyone.
Uh. Robert, you have to tell everybody that they can self nominate. They don't have to be nominated by someone else.
I appreciate the reminder about that. Thank you, Ellen. Yes, you could self nominate yourself as well as you can nominate others for the position. And then once nominated, you have an opportunity to accept the nomination or decline the nomination. Give us a brief, if you wanted to accept the nomination, give us a uh, brief ex- um, description about yourself. As for the sake of the community as well as for the public record, and then we'll move on to voting for said position with the members of the board.
And they need to tell us why they want to be the person for that position.
Which we own the self explanation portion, but yes, that would also be appreciated as well. Thank you, Ellen. So. Anson, do you have anything to add to that?
Uh, Christopher Moylanty, you nominate yourself?
No, I don't, I'm not nominating myself.
Oh, sorry.
I would not presume to do that. I have another nomination.
Oh, okay.
Can I make it now?
Okay.
I nominate Vice Chair Bozal to be Chair. If she's willing.
Um, I am not willing.
Okay.
Elton?
Thank you, Chair. I nominate First Vice Chair Dave Nagaji.
Um, thank you. Um, I would. If um, Chair Zane is not interested in running for reelection.
At which point, I'd like to put in my sense as well. It's been great being the Chair for the Neighborhood Board for the past year. And watching other mem- other communities and neighborhood boards be uh, and seeing what other chairs have done. I feel that is gr- great that we need somebody with a lot of passion and being able to go out into the community. And for that reason, I also would like to nominate Vice Chair Dave Nagaji to become the new Chair of the Neighborhood Board. For the neck, for the year going through June twenty twenty five. I feel that he's in a good position to do so. He has a lot of passion. He has a lot of ideas on what he wants to do for the community. My goal with the chairmanship was to make sure the trains ran on time and we get to the agendas. I feel like I did a good job of that, and I think at this point, I like to have somebody with a lot more passion, a lot more interest. And able to end the function to be going forward and bring the board to the next step of community outreach. And ideas for what to do in the future, and I believe Dave is the best person for that. Ellen?
Well, I think, thank you, Robert, for uh, you know, everything you said. Um, I do appreciate it, and I would like to accept the nomination. Thank you.
Ellen, get out your hand raised.
Yes, I, I think that Dave would be a great Chair. So Dave, yeah, do that. Robert, I wanted to ask you, is there any other position in the office, officers of the board? That you want to serve in, or you just want to be a member at this point?
At this point, if somebody wants to nominate me before a position, I'm fine with that. If somebody, if um.
Like you can serve as Vice Chair, for instance, if Dave wasn't here, then you could run the meeting, right?
In theory, I could do that.
Okay, uh, Ellen, nominating Vice Chair for is.
Wait, uh, nominee. Well, first, well, hold on, hold on. Anson, I think we're going out of order. First, we have to, we have to go to the vote to approve. The nomination of Dave Nagaji as Chair of the Neighborhood Board, and then he will take the gavel and proceed with the following votes after that.
Okay. Okay, uh, you guys good for voting right now or?
Well, you ask if there's any other nominations. If not, then you can call the vote. And if it's you, you can, if it's unanimous, it can just by ac- be by acclamation. If there is someone that objects to Dave, then you have to do a roll call vote.
Exactly. So, any nominations? Hearing none, we will move, move now into proceeding for votes for Dave Nagaji to be the new Chair of the Neighborhood Board. Do we have any opposition or objections? Hearing, seeing.
Oh wait, um, Chair Zane, uh, we still, the way we have to do this, oh no, it's me, Anson. Um, in order to do this, we have, have to do a, a roll call vote. Yeah, we have to make sure that like everyone's agree with it. So if, we do that for every board. It's not just.
For the, for the election of officers, but not necessarily for other things, correct?
Yep, we have to do a roll call vote. So when I call your name, please say Nagaji. For being as Vice as Chair of the Neighborhood Board. Okay? Okay, uh, Zane.
Nagaji.
Watson.
Nagaji.
Uh, Bozal.
Nagaji.
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 Uh, Fukamoto.
Nagaji.
Lumen.
Nagaji.
Tong. 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 Moilen.
Nagaji.
Kwanu.
Nagaji.
And Mishreki.
Nagaji.
Okay, he is now, that's one, two, three, nine. And that's eight votes. It's now the Chair of the Board.
He is, I'm, I'm in the meeting, Robert Fox.
Oh, oh, sorry. Fox, this is uh, for uh, Nate Nagaji as a, as a Chair. So, are you okay with him?
No, you got ten, yep.
Okay.
Did you say Nagaji?
He did.
He might muted, that's why. So I just wanted to check.
Okay, that's ten.
Yes, said Nagaji. Did not call Tong.
Oh, and yes, Diane's also here too, so.
Nagaji.
Okay, Tom. Okay. Okay, that's eleven votes. He is now the Chair of the Board.
Alright.
Alright.
The gavel is yours.
Thank you, um, outgoing Chair Zane for the gavel. Um, I do appreciate the nominations. I appreciate everything that members. Uh, Watson and Zane Fukamoto said, um, I'm gonna do my best to serve as a good Chair. And keep us as engaged as possible with the community and hopefully to get us back to uh, to an in-person location at some point during this term, but we'll uh. We'll see about that. I've, I've heard some possibilities for it, so we'll, we'll see how that goes, but. Thank you everyone for uh, for the vote, and I'll um, proceed with the meeting. So, our next election is for uh, First Vice Chair. Do we have any nominations, including self nominations for the First Vice Chair slot? Member Watson.
I nominate Robert Zane.
Does Robert Zane accept?
I accept.
And I also raised hand from a member Bozal.
Thank you, yes. Um, I'll self nominate.
Alright, we have two nominees for the First Vice Chair, um, members Zane and Whitney, or excuse me, members Zane and Bozal. Uh, do we have any other nominations uh, going once? Going twice? Okay, uh, seeing and hearing none, I will ask Anson to do a roll call vote for uh, First Vice Chair. Our two candidates are Zane and Bozal.
We don't have to have two Vice Chairs. First Vice Chair.
Uh, when I call your name, please say Zane or Bozal. Eh, Zane. Yes. Of course, First Vice Chair.
Well, we don't even know if we need a second Vice Chair, right? So we're just voting for the Vice Chair.
Yes.
It's just Vice Chair. She's right. It's not First Vice Chair. It's just Vice Chair.
Okay, uh, so, Zane.
Zane.
Okay. Uh, Watson.
Zane.
Yep. Bozal.
Um, I just had a question. Were we not supposed to say anything about ourselves because we already know everything?
You know, you know, that, that was my bad. I, I, I should have called for discussion. I'm sorry, Anson, let's, let's roll back the. The roll call vote and give both candidates a chance to speak, so um. Uh, I won't call it time to anyone, but please try to keep it to a, a minute or two at most. And uh, because Robert was nominated first and accepted first, uh, Robert, you can go ahead and um, make your speech, and then we'll turn it over to Whitney.
Okay, so, Robert Zane, I've been on the board for quite some time. And um, I'd like to still be involved with it. I really appreciate Dave taking over the chairmanship as Vice Chair. Again, I, my purpose and my, I believe would be to support him to the best of my ability. As well as to make sure that if he's not available for the meetings, that they run smoothly, we go through the agenda, and we make sure that members of the community are heard. So that way, the items and issues that they want presented are discussed, and at least they all have an opportunity to speak on this matter. So that's my say. Thank you.
Can we hear? So you can go ahead.
Okay, sorry, I was waiting to be called on. Um, so Whitney Bozal, I've been a member for a few years now and. Um, just interested in getting the community's word out to the public, getting uh, you know, members of the community heard. And making sure that the, the views of the community are transmitted to those in power. And that we have a, an effective uh, forum here for discussion and information for everyone. Thank you.
Alright, uh, thank you, Members Zane and Whitney for uh, your election speeches. And this time, I will now call again a um, a roll call vote from Anson for election of Vice Chair.
Okay. Uh, when I call your name, please say Zane or Bozal for your pick, Vice Chair. Uh, Zane.
Zane.
Eh, Bozal. Uh, me, Watson, sorry.
Zane.
Eh, uh, Bozal.
Bozal.
Eh, Nagaji.
Zane.
Fukamoto. Fukamoto.
Zane.
Lumen.
Bozal.
Lee. Oh, uh, cough.
We're voting, we're voting on the amendment, aren't we? I just.
Uh, right now, we're doing uh, voting for Vice Chair, Zane or Bozal.
Oh, yes, I, uh, yes.
So, Joan, you needed to say either um, Zane or Bozal.
A, yes, A. I have to say, I have to choose. What are you saying I have to do?
Yeah, you have to, there are two of us up for it. Nagaji has become our new Chair, and both I and our former Chair Zane are running for Vice Chair. So you get to pick between the two of us.
Yeah, just cast your vote, Joan. Just cast a vote.
Zane or Bozal?
Oh, I think you're on mute, Joan.
Oh my god.
Bozal.
Okay, Bozal, okay.
Okay.
Tong. Tong.
Diane, he's calling you.
Chong or Tom? Tom.
Tom. Zane or Bozal?
I just said Bozal.
Okay. Moilen. Bozal. Kwanu.
Zane.
Gotta be close.
Fox.
Bozal.
And Mishreki.
Sorry, I, I know we're doing the vote, but I, there was a mention before that it, it sounded like there were two Vice Chair positions, just for historical context. Can I, can I just confirm wh- why is it that this time we're only choosing one Vice Chair as opposed to two of them?
And, and, and you want me to answer that?
Yeah.
Good day.
Okay, so um. Basically, the, the rules of the Neighborhood Board say that we need a Vice Chair, and to give us the option to have a second Vice Chair. So what we're doing is we're voting on a Vice Chair, and after we've decided a Vice Chair, we may or may not want to have a second Vice Chair.
I see, and that, that would be determined after this vote as well, or is that something that would be determined later?
Th- that'll be discussed right after we decide on the Vice Chair. But, but, wherever we decide on the Vice Chair. Then we'll discuss whether we want to have a second Vice Chair or only one Vice Chair.
Understood, understood. Thank you for the clarification. Uh, my vote is Bozal.
Kwanu.
Zane.
Oh, oh, sorry. Uh, that's seven for Bozal and one. Oh, that's. Now, I got seven for Bozal and one. Five for Zane. Uh, in order for uh, a member to be elected in, in office, they need to have majority vote, which is nine. So.
Um, I'm gonna go call in Member Watson and then Member Fukamoto.
Thank you. I think that before we had voted on Vice Chair. There should have been a discussion whether we want one Vice Chair or two. Although the requirement in the neighborhood plan is only one, we have the option of having two. And so, we should have already decided that. And then we could have been voting on a First Vice Chair, and then a Second Vice Chair. And then Secretary and then Treasurer, because maybe one of the two candidates. Would decide that they want to be a Second Vice Chair and not a First Vice Chair. Um. You know, because otherwise, I mean, you can try that and call a roll vote again. If not, then leave it how it is and we'll decide it at the next meeting. We don't.
I, I'm gonna call for.
Vice Chair to do it, yeah?
I I want to hear what Elton has to say, and then I'll ask Zane. Uh Elton, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So what I suggest here is that um our Bosel actually has received more votes than members Zane. And so realizing that that the um that the winner needs nine votes. I suggest either that. Uh member Zane. Uh retract his nomination or. That when we revote, uh we vote for member Bosel because she received more votes. Uh in in this first election. Thank you.
Alright, uh Robert, go ahead. Uh Robert Zane, go ahead.
Thing has our um Whitney, you want Whitney wants to become the vice chair alive. So I'm gonna I'll retract um the nomination for my um. The exception of the nomination, so that way Whitney can go unopposed on this one. I wanna I wanna see what she does and and how she's able to help with the interactions with the community. So by all means, Whitney. You should take the vice chairmanship. Let's get this movement running, and that way we can get the agenda going.
And and Anson, uh because member Rose has seven votes and needs nine, I'm going to change my vote from Zane to Bosel, and we need one more person to change for her for what needs to be elected.
I'll change mine as well.
Okay.
And I'll change mine as well.
Okay.
This is number who called, I changed my vote.
Yep.
Alright, um.
I think we're good then. Uh Bosel is now a vice chair.
Member Watson, go ahead.
Thank you. My question to you, Whitney. Is I know that you wanna work with the community and recruit people and make sure everybody's heard and whatever, and we all want that as as board members, but. The real gift that I hope you have, that Robert has. Is he knows how to use WebEx, he knows how to help people solve problems, he's here on time at the meeting or before it starts. And he can really get people dialed in, and so. I feel we're really looking. In, you know, in a chair, what I want is somebody who can run this meeting, shows up early, fifteen minutes before it starts, is here all the time. And and can just dial in with people and get them up on the WebEx and people that signed in twice and. Then there's a big echo to to be able to tell them to how to fix it. And. My only miss, my only not knowing is if you know how to do all that. Because Nagaji does and Zane does. And if and if if Dave Nagaji is not here and you have to run the meeting, I want you to be able to steer the boat. Because you know all that stuff, and you're young, so you probably know all that tech stuff, but I don't know that you know it. So what say you?
Uh thank you, Ellen. I feel confident that I will be able to help people sign in correctly on WebEx and help them, you know, get get their audio issues. As much as anyone can do tech support over WebEx over the phone, I feel confident that I'll be able to help out with that, yes.
Alright. Action has happened, so I'm gonna call on um I think that's remember Moylan for a very quick comment, and then we're gonna move to discussion on whether we're gonna have a second vice chair. So remember Moylan, go ahead.
Well, I know that uh Mr. Chair, everyone else is trying to run your meeting for you, so let me also make a suggestion. We are required to elect a secretary and a treasurer, and we have the option of electing another vice chair. You might want to hold the option of other vice chair after the other two, because we have to fill those positions, and that way everyone has the chance to do those two positions. And then if we have people left over and want to serve, we could make another vice chair. Just a suggestion.
Uh you know, uh thanks, uh member Moylan. Um I do see the logic of your argument, but. Uh customarily, the prior three years that I've been on the board, it's been um chair than vice chairs and secretary and treasurer, so I'm gonna keep doing it the um established uh pattern. So uh at this time, I would like us to have. Chair um with that second vice chair also having responsibility of being our timekeeper. So. In a moment, I'm gonna ask if anyone wants to nominate. Um for vice for the second vice chair, but first, does anyone have any strong objections to us having a second vice chair? Um member Moylan?
I didn't want to make a comment. I was just doing a show of hands. I don't think we need one. If we have one, great.
Alright, um since member one was the only uh raised hand objecting to that, I'm gonna go ahead and open up nominations for second vice chair. Uh please uh raise your hands and nominate someone else or nominate yourself for second vice chair. Member Watson?
I nominate Robert Zane for second vice chair, because if they're not here, we need you, yeah?
I accept the nomination.
Alright, so we have Robert Zane as um our candidate. For second vice chair, do we have any other nominations, including self-nominations? Going once, going twice? Uh I see a raised hand from Tom Benedict, so i- if he wants to come, he can, and then we'll do the vote. Okay, sorry, not not hearing Tom Benedict, so I'm gonna go ahead and uh ask Anson for the roll call vote. Only candidate is Robert Zane, but we still need nine votes to make it official. Anson, please go ahead.
Okay, when I call your name, please say Zane for second vice chair. Zane?
Zane.
Uh Watson?
Zane.
Bosel?
Zane.
Nagaji?
Zane.
Fukamoto?
Zane.
Lumen?
Zane.
Ka. Joanne?
Zane.
Eh Diane Tong?
Zane.
Moylan, Zane? Kuan Ho?
Zing?
Robert? Fox?
Yes.
Uh Zane? You go for Zane?
Yes.
Okay. Sherry?
Zane.
Okay. That's twelve votes. Yeah, uh Robert Zane is now second vice chair.
Alright, uh thank you, member Bosel, for setting up to become uh first vice chair Bosel, and thank you, uh Robert Zane, for continuing continuing to serve as a second vice chair Zane. So we have two more officers to elect tonight before we go into other business. Uh and next up is secretary. Do we have any nominations, including self-nominations for secretary? Member Watson?
I just wanted to tell the board, because maybe they don't know, if the chair is absent. And the vice chair is absent. And the second vice chair is absent. And that can happen if we call a special meeting or something like that. It is the secretary that will run that meeting. So secretary candidates need to be able to run. The board meetings. I I just wanted to bring that up. That's from the neighborhood plan, just so. So that there's no surprises and the other three don't show up and all of a sudden you're it. Yeah, so people just need to know that. Thank you.
Alright, uh thank you for the comment, member Watson. Do we have anyone making nominations, including self-nominations for secretary? Please raise your hand if so.
I'll um, oh.
Yep, member, member Koff, go ahead.
I'll nominate myself as secretary.
Alright, we have member Koff nominated for secretary. Do we have any other nominations or self-nominations? Going once? Going twice? Okay, I'm seeing and hearing none, so Anson, please do a roll call vote for secretary with the member Koff is the only candidate.
Okay, when I call your name, please say Koff. As a secretary. Zane?
Bosel.
Watson?
Bosel.
Bosel?
Ka.
Nagaji?
Ka.
Fukamoto?
Ka.
Lumen?
Ka.
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 Tong? Diane?
Ka.
Moylan, Ka. Kuan Ho?
Ka.
Robert?
Ka.
Ms. Sherry?
Ka.
Okay, that's twelve votes. Uh Joanne is still the secretary.
Alright, thank you, member Koff, for continuing to serve as Secretary Koff. And now we're up to our last officer election tonight, and that is gonna be the treasurer. So do we have any nominations, including self-nominations for treasurer? If so, please your uh please raise your hand.
I nominate Patty Kuan Ho.
Member Kuan Ho, do you accept the nomination for treasurer?
Oh, thank you, Ellen. I I will only accept it nobody else, so is willing to. Take the role.
Alright, in that case, let's see, is anyone else interested in nominating or self-nominating for treasurer? Going once? Going twice?
I would have put.
Alright. I'm seeing and hearing none, so it looks like uh member Kuan Ho, in that case, uh no one else stepping up. You're okay with being a candidate?
Um yes, I will.
Alright, just confirming. Uh Anson, please do a roll call vote with uh member Kuan Ho, only treasurer candidate.
Okay, when I call your name, please say Kuan Ho. Zane?
Kuan Ho.
Watson?
Kuan Ho.
Bosel?
Kuan Ho.
Nagaji?
Kuan Ho.
Fukamoto?
Kuan Ho.
Lumen? Lumen? Lumen?
Kuan Ho, sorry.
Okay. Ka.
Uh. I blacked on your name. Uh Kuan Ho.
Okay. Tong. Diane.
Kuan Ho.
Okay. Moylan?
Kuan Ho.
Kuan Ho?
Kuan Ho.
Fox?
Kuan Ho.
Ms. Sherry?
Kuan Ho.
Okay. Patty Kuan Ho is now the treasurer. That's twelve votes.
Alright, thank you, member Kuan Ho, for continuing to serve as treasurer. We are now through our uh officer elections for this officer term, which is gonna last for about a year. And next, we're going to item uh three B, which is meeting date, time, location, format. So currently, Manoa Neighborhood Board number seven. Uh meets the first Wednesday of the month at seven PM, the WebEx, and with the in-person a location of Kapal Amahale. Um. We do not yet have a an alternative venue decided, uh so I'm gonna just uh call on member Watson right now. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um. I don't know if our, I mean, we've been meeting the first Wednesday of every month, like forever, right? And maybe. Anson knows the answer to this question. Is anybody open to meeting on a Saturday morning? And the reason I suggest that, well, just listen. Is that. We probably could meet at Nolani School, because the only reason we can't meet there is that their janitor has to stay and lock up after we're done at ten o'clock. And the janitor lives in Miloani. So if the janitor lived close by, probably an evening wouldn't be a problem. So that's why I was wondering. And I don't even know if the Neighborhood Commission Office does anything on a Saturday morning. But we probably could use Nolani School uh for something like that. Um the same with Manoa Valley Church. They close their doors at nine. So we have to go till ten, so we cannot meet there. So. I just wondered if other board members had thoughts about that. And first of all, I wondered if the Neighborhood Commission would allow it? If it wasn't a Monday through Friday gig, so.
Alright, I'll I'll go to Robert Zane and then we'll go to uh member Moylan.
Oh.
Oh, actually, uh before I. Before I speak, can can we have Anson respond to that uh to Ellen's comments first, please? Because I think my question and comments will be better.
Anson, Anson, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, we can't do a Saturday. I don't, we only work on Mondays to Fridays.
Alright, um I I have an own comment I want to make on this, but first, uh I'm gonna turn it over to Robert Zane and then member Moylan. So Robert Zane, please go ahead.
I'm not.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. Oh, no, uh it wasn't Moylan. It was me who raised the hand. So.
Okay, okay. Alright.
But it's a good point to discuss it, because the NCO says no go. So why do we care what anybody's opinion is about Saturday?
Well, no, I was gonna um draw up my own, like, separate subject on this, Ellen. I wasn't gonna have commented on this Saturday thing. So um I know that we've also had a lot of comments, and while I was the chair during the past year, we've had a lot of people wondering about locations, and I know every. People in the on this board have tried really hard to at least. Try to find us a location. It's not like we haven't tried to get in-person meetings or a location. It's just that it's been really hard, and we need a place that's able to produce hybrid meetings. Because a lot of us want to um stay online, some of us want in-person. We want to have the option for both, but that's really hard to accomplish. And. I think part of the problem, as Ellen pointed out, is the fact that seven to ten is a little bit too late for like Norlani, where we used to have it. If we want to have, if we want to make an in-person location. In Manoa, it seems that we need to consider. The possibility of changing the time to an earlier time slot potentially on a weekday, which would then pose problems for people who are trying to come in from out of work. But I just want to be um like that very clear to everybody over here. I I don't have a solution or a time or preference at this point. I know I'm usually working till six, a lot of weekdays too, but. Um. We'll see what happens uh with what the what the board decides and whether we change the time or not.
Thank you, uh member Zane. Uh the one thing I want to flag is that um. Just a week or two ago, I was talking to a community member who said that there was a point in the past where the Nolani um administration would. Allow a member of the board to keep a key on them in order to open up and lock down. So if that's true, then.
Will not allow it anymore, the principle that's there. So it's a no-go.
Alright, I I do want to move forward on the agenda, but I'm gonna call on Clyde Lumen, then uh Tom Heinrich, and then Ellen Sofio, so uh Clyde Lumen, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Uh. One question I have about the meeting places, you know, the school said, well, they have to make allow for other organizations. Uh and so they can't give us a, you know, a schedule. They won't allow us to have a schedule, or they're just one at a time, and. But the school here said they do two at a time, but then there was a problem with the with the Wi-Fi. But it seems to me we should maybe go to the Department of Education. Uh because we are more than an organization. We are part of the governance, and so I feel we have a priority over organizations and that uh. And I think those these boards, neighborhood boards should be broadened and and made more available. To the community, and the school is the most logical place to meet. And so. I just think that the Department of Education should be involved in it, and that schools should be. Um. Just basically told they have to allow one or two days per month for uh neighborhood board meetings.
I gotta put you on the line. We got it.
Alright, um.
I'm gonna make up.
Thank you, member Lumen. I'm gonna move to uh Tom Heinrich now. Uh Tom Heinrich, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Uh just a couple of comments. The uh you can always consider uh other alternatives. Uh but as Anson Wu has well uh stated already, uh the time of work for the city employees, even of the Neighborhood Commission Office. Unless very special arrangements are made for uh certain Neighborhood Commission activities on uh Saturday, uh it's just Monday through Friday. The other thing to be well considered uh is that this is just one of thirty-three neighborhood boards. So in managing the overall schedule uh and resources for all of the neighborhood. So in managing the overall schedule, uh, and resources for all of the neighborhood boards, for instance, uh, if this board wanted to change the time of meeting, not too bad. But if you wanted to change the date, then that really needs to be well-coordinated far in advance with the uh, because, uh, support schedules are going to have to be changed. Uh, and then last comment, uh, to the board as a whole, uh, really is, that, uh, the discussion and the debate, uh, and listening to others is very important. Uh, it, so I urge you to, uh, keep an open mind. Uh, I did not care for the, uh, cutoff of the debate, uh, earlier on, on this particular topic. Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you, everyone. So, um, we aren't gonna make any changes tonight, uh, but just so that people can see what they want to say, I'll, I'll let Ellen Sofio go, and then we'll, um, go to, uh, Anson Wu or whoever's on Anson's screen, and then I'll let, uh, Member Watson have the last word, and then we're going to move on to the next item. So, uh, Ellen Sofio, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Nagaji. Can everyone hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Uh, okay. Uh, so I just wanted to add a couple of pieces of information to this discussion. Uh, our neighborhood recently had two privately paid for meetings at the Noalani Cafeteria, and the first one, we met outside the library because no one came to open the gate to the parking lot or the cafeteria itself. Uh, when that happened, I was able to reach, uh, Principal Brian Guzman on the phone. And during our discussion about that, he did mention that, as I had heard on a previous occasion, that his custodian lives in Millilani and that, uh, he was in Kapalae. Uh, so there was no way for us to get the key that night, uh, but he volunteered to me that in previous years, he did have an arrangement for somebody to have a key, and he didn't say that that was not possible. It was just that because of time constraints, we didn't really get into discussing that. So I was hoping maybe the board could invite, uh, Principal Guzman to the next meeting or to a meeting soon, so that there can be a public discussion with him about the possibility of using Noalani. Um, the other issue is that at the second meeting, I had a conversation with the, the individual from DOE that was locking up afterwards. And I said, oh, are you from Millilani? And he said, no, I'm from Kailua. And then I realized that he was not the custodian. And what he told me was that they have a rotating arrangement, as he referred to it, where, uh, a number of different employees at the school rotate responsibility for, uh, and are paid uh, as volunteers. They sign up for this, what they consider a privilege to, uh, lock and unlock the cafeteria facility. So I don't know if that same rotating arrangement is available for the neighborhood board, but or if it's somehow different, but maybe Principal Guzman could clarify that as well.
All right. Uh, thank you, uh, Ellen Sofio. Um, I'm now going to call on Anson Wu or whoever's on Anson's screen.
Moylan.
Hey, it's me, Member Moylan. Um, everything that everyone has said about an alternative location is completely reasonable and correct, but we can't solve that tonight. And we have a large number of people, or item 4B, that have had to sit around while we are doing other things. I would like to speed things up for them, and I'd be happy to move that we adopt items 3, B, C, and D as currently written. The current meet, date, meeting time, allowing for the option if we, uh, get another place. And I also would suggest that you might want to form a PIG, a subcommittee, to go look into that, so we can get work done between meetings on that issue. And then we could also endorse our recess schedule up to three per year, and adoption of the existing oral testimony rules. So I could make that motion. We could clean up the rest of item three now, and then maybe get to what all the people are here for.
I second his motion.
Oh, wait, um.
Is that in order?
Uh, for the recess, we actually, we have to determine what the recess is. So we have to determine if it's going to be
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll go through them. I'll just go fast. So item 3C, we're moving on to 3C. Determination of recess schedule, three times per year. Um, so I'm in favor of keeping it as it currently is, which is, um, the 12th month and the 6th month. Um, so, uh, June and December being our recess months, and that's, um, can be changed if, if, um, a major issue comes up as it did last June, so.
That take care of it?
Uh, Members Zane, please go ahead.
Sorry, I was gonna suggest, um, moving it to July instead, because usually the Fourth of July is during that first week. Uh, it may, and it may run into conflicts with people's travel schedules and whatnot. So I was just changing the vacation dates to 12th, uh, to December and July.
All right. Uh, thanks, Members Zane, and, um.
Yeah, July.
All right, um, I'm just gonna go call on Tom Heinrich real quick, and then we'll try to move past this. So, uh, Tom Heinrich, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, just one limitation here. Your term ends on June 30. Uh, and as a result, the next neighborhood board, uh, needs to convene and get organized in July of 2025. Uh, so whatever recesses you want to do, you are good only until June 30. Thanks.
That'd be great.
Yeah, so we better not, not recess for June.
Uh, you can always, um, we could just decide for December, and then later on, you can decide a different schedule, another recess date. If that, that's okay. Or you could just do September.
In the interest of time, I'm going to defer the, the other, um, recess date to later. Um, does anyone object to having December as our tentative, uh, late year recess month, December? I'm seeing shaking heads and thumbs ups, so I'm guessing that people are good with it, and people aren't objecting to it. Correct me if I'm wrong. Okay, so December is going to be, uh, tentatively our late year recess month, and we'll also figure out a, uh, a mid-year recess month at a later time, in the interest of time we're moving forward, to item 3C, or, excuse me, 3D, adoption of oral testimony rules, so I'm thinking.
Chair Nagaji.
Yes.
Uh, so for item 3B, who moved second that?
Ellen Watson did.
Ellen Watson? Is that correct?
Yes. I heard her do it.
I thought it was retained to all of this.
Yes, it was BC and D, it's my motion. Oh, okay, so.
BC and D, so we don't need to do D, Dave Nagaji.
Okay, so, just to be clear, um, if you're going forward with this motion of approving BC and D, then I'm assuming that means, uh, the oral testimony rules will remain as they've been, which is 60 seconds, and it's up to the discretion of Time Keeper, which is the second vice chair to a call time on people. If that's okay with everyone, then, um, the motion was made, I think, by Member Moylan and seconded by Watson. So, um, do we have any objections to approving, uh, B, C, and D? Again, that's basically keeping B the same in terms of time, location, date, um, keeping oral testimony the same at 60 seconds, and deciding to recess December with a second month to be determined. That's motion up. Do we have any objections to it? Uh, Clyde, Clyde Lumen, your hand is up. Is that an objection? Okay, that was not an objection. Anson Wu, I see your hand up. Is that an objection?
Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry.
All right. There's no hands up, there's no objections, so that motion passes unanimously. All right, so we're now at, um, to the St. Francis Resolution, just a second. But first, uh, filling of vacancies. We have one vacancy in Subdistrict 3, and three vacancies in Subdistrict 4. Are there any residents of those areas who would like to step forward to fill a vacancy? If so, uh, raise your hand, or if you know of someone who's here, then you can raise your hand. Uh, do we have anyone for that?
If I could, I'd like to put my name in for consideration for the vacancy in Subdistrict 3. My name's Michael Heed.
Okay, um, Michael Heed, have you, uh, sent your documents in to, uh, the NCO for them to, um, authenticate the place where you live?
I have.
Uh, and Anson, are his documents good?
Uh, oh, it's been a while, actually. Um, I want to chat about that, sorry. But also Jason, uh, DeMarco is here, um.
Uh, Jason DeMarco, uh, well, well, Anson is checking that. Uh, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I am also putting forward my name to serve in Subdistrict 3. And I also have sent in my information, uh, to the commission to verify.
I, I took Jason DeMarco's one, his one.
What is your name? I'm sorry, what are the names?
It's Michael Heed and Jason DeMarco. And, uh, Ellen Sofio, I see that you go ahead and raise as well.
Yes, um, I would like to put my name in the hopper for the, the, uh, just Subdistrict 3 opening. I have not sent my paperwork in yet, and, uh, I have my driver's license in my hand, but I, I definitely live in the Subdistrict.
Okay, um, so we have three people who are interested in the position, which interestingly enough makes it the first, um, competitive race to fill vacancies that I've seen so far. But, um, one has not, uh, sent the documentation in yet, so that's going to take a while to authenticate. And Anson said that one of the others, or possibly two of the others, he, um, isn't sure yet. So, Anson, is it possible for us to move to, um, the next item on the agenda, and for you to, uh, check this, or what, what's the ETA on verifying them?
Yeah, we could just skip that for, for right now, and then we can just come back to it later on, if we still have time.
So, can we hear from the candidates about themselves? Anyway?
Voting tonight. Or we could just postpone it and then come back to the next one. Like, I believe that one would be more better, because I'll have all your verifications, and then we can all just do the voting on that day, and you can send us all.
Okay. Um, yeah, I, I'm inclined to, to, oh, sorry, I'll, I'll call on, uh, Members, um, Zane and Watson, because they want to comment.
Um, my only comment, really quickly, Dave, is that because there are three people who are going to fill up a, uh, potential vacancy, one of them's going to want to do, want to get that vacancy filled up, it's going to affect the quorum number on the votes as well, especially on items such as the resolution. So just keep that in mind, uh, before you make the decision.
Uh, let, let me ask that of, um, Anson real quick. Um, it was my understanding that for a S resolution, we need nine yes votes, regardless of how many members we have filling slots. Am I incorrect? Does it go up or down?
We need, uh, in order for, uh, a board member to be part of the board, we need nine. Yeah, the one person needs to have nine. Majority.
So I, I'm, I'm still inclined to, uh, not do this election now, because people are waiting on the other item, and because we still have the documents to authenticate, I think it's going to take too long. But I'm going to call on Members Bosel and Fox before we move forward. Uh, everyone, so please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just would say that I'm inclined to hear, you know, a 45-second spiel from each person on their background and what they're hoping to accomplish in the role, and what, you know, what, what they're going to bring to the role.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, Member Fox, uh, real quick, what are your thoughts on this?
Thank you. I think it's, uh, respectful that we listen to these people. It's very difficult to have anyone join our board, and they deserve the right to be heard and voted on, because it's hard to get people to even come up. So I would suggest that we need to do this now. It's disrespectful not to.
Green, is that Member Moylan wanting to comment?
Oh, yes.
Yes, because at least one of the three people who would like to serve can't be verified tonight, and maybe two of them. I would move that we postpone this to the next meeting, but of course, allow them all to speak and tell us about their background and all that sort of stuff, but not do it tonight. Do it next time when all of the candidates have been verified.
Okay. All right, I'm, I'm going to end discussion, um, or end it beyond this, and here's what we're going to do. Um, we're, we're going to let all three.
Okay, I did, oh, wait, um.
Member Watson, sure, real quick, real quick.
Um.
Go ahead.
The filling of board seats is a board item on the agenda. It does not say on the agenda you have to verify with the NCO first. And I really think out of respect for these people, we need to do that. And Ensign can verify off, offline with them. They can email to Ensign right now a copy of their driver's license or whatever shows their address. That's the verification. In the meantime, we need to hear less than a minute or a minute from each one of them. That's three minutes about.
You convinced me, you convinced me. You convinced me, Member Watson. We're, we're going to do that.
And we take a recess and verify them and swear them in.
Okay, so I, I was going to say have them all speak, but then we'll vote on it later or another month, but I think that Watson's a fair point. They all came out. We struggled to fill vacancies, so let's hear the three of them. Um, I'll ask Time Keeper to keep it tight on time, so don't go very much over a minute. Let's hear from three candidates, let's do a vote. They get authenticated, whenever they get authenticated, and then we're going to move to the, um, resolution on the agenda. So I'll just go in the order that I heard people in, uh, which was, uh, Michael Heed. Uh, please go first.
Okay, so my name's Michael Heed. I'm born and raised in Hawaii, grew up St. Louis, St. Louis Heights, but spent many of my summers and after-schools at the, uh, Manoa District Park. Um, I've, um, I've always wanted to live in Manoa, so after coming back from college, I purchased a house here, and I've been a resident here for 30-plus years. Um, you know, part of the reason for liking Manoa is because of the character. And although I realize change is inevitable, um, I think the thing that makes Manoa special is the character, and I think we're constantly under attack, um, on the character that makes Manoa, Manoa, and that needs protection. Um, in the past, I've just been doing my own selfish things, but I figured now it's time to speak out, as these things are going to come up over and over and over again in the future. So I ask you for your consideration.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Heed. And the next person who spoke on this was, uh, Jason DeMarco. So Jason DeMarco, please go ahead and, uh, give your candidate speech.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Uh, I've fairly recently moved into Manoa Valley from Kaimuki. Uh, in Kaimuki, I served on the neighborhood board there for two terms, most recently as secretary. Uh, I mean, sorry, as treasurer, and I also served as the planning and zoning committee chair. So my interest is to bring my professional expertise as a licensed architect and prior experience with community engagement and topics of great concern to all of us of zoning and planning and the character of our neighborhoods, uh, to this board. I look forward to rolling up my sleeves and getting to work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Marco, and Ellen Sofio. Please give your speech.
Hi, hi, everyone. After hearing the summaries from the other two, I'm withdrawing my, uh, I'm withdrawing my name from the hopper. It was an impulsive decision, and, uh, I would like to join the board, but right now I'm probably too busy. Thank you.
All right, thank you, um, Ellen Sofio. And I, I saw that, uh, Member Kuanu raised your hand during discussion. Member Kuanu, did you have a commenter question?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I, I was just going to ask, um, Mr. Heed if he has a camera, would like to show his video, we can at least see how it looks like.
I can. I wish I dressed better. Let's see.
Oh, it's, it's like to me too, and, and I think it would be helpful.
Let me give a shot here.
You know.
When you folks spoke about technology, um, I'm not the greatest at this.
It'd be one of the little round buttons at the bottom of your screen.
I see it. I see it.
Perhaps?
Got a shot here. Is that, did that do it? No?
No.
No.
While you're working on that, I'm going to call on a member Bosel, because I see your hand raised. Then I'm going to call on, um, Member Fox, and then we'll close discussion on this. So, remember, so please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um, this is for Mr. DeMarco. Am I right in thinking that you came to our meeting, uh, two months ago, our last meeting that we held, and tried to join right at the end?
Yes, that is correct, but time was not available to, uh, hold an election at that time.
Okay, thank you. I thought so. Thank you.
All right, uh, Member Fox, uh, please, uh, ask what you're going to ask, your comment, what you were going to comment.
Mine's done, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we're into a vote, um. Okay. All right, so we're into a vote per the normal rules. We need nine to get a person on.
Nobody can help Mr. He get his video up?
I can't see him. Is he still here?
Sometimes. Don't even have a camera.
I see him and his camera.
I logged myself up by accident. There we go.
There you are.
See me?
Yes.
Okay, so
The thing about these video poppers.
Um, we're into a vote. We do need nine to finalize. After, at the end of the vote, it's possible neither side will have a required nine votes to be seated. That's okay. We can do a second vote to whoever gets the majority. But at this time, I'm going to close the discussion on this, ask Anson to do a roll call vote to fill the vacancy. Yes, Anson?
Nomining Michael He and Jason DiMarco. We need a person to nominate.
Okay, we need nominations. Can someone raise their hands to nominate?
Chair, I'd like to nominate Mr. DiMarco for this role, considering he actually tried to join two months ago.
All right. Mr. DiMarco, is there anyone to nominate Mr. He? Robert Zane is a nomination.
I'll nominate Mr. He.
All right, he's nominated by Robert Zane. DiMarco has been nominated by Whitney Bosel. Anson, please do the roll call vote.
Okay, when I call your name, please say Jason or Michael He to go on the vacancy for Sub District Three. Zane?
Michael.
Yep. Watson?
Michael.
Bosel?
DiMarco.
Okay, Dave?
Mr. He?
Elton?
Jason.
Fukamoto?
Jason.
Okay, sorry. Clyde? Lumen?
DiMarco, sorry.
Lee?
He. Michael.
Hey?
He.
Chong?
DiMarco.
Moylan?
DiMarco.
Kwan?
Jason DiMarco.
Okay, Fox?
Martha.
And Mr. Reiki?
He.
Seven for Jason. Six for he. We need nine.
You say seven for Jason, six for he?
To Sub District Four, and then you both can be on the board.
Okay, I did vote for Mr. He, and he and I were in contact early about some new board business, so I did vote for him, but Jason has the majority, and he needs nine to be seated, so I will change my vote to Jason DiMarco.
Okay, anybody else?
To Jason DiMarco. And Mr. He, I hope you still continue to be coming to our board meetings, and community members can serve on committees, and they can serve on permitted interaction groups. So you can still be active, even though Jason will sit on the board, and when there's a vacancy, you're it. You can apply again, yeah? Okay.
All right, thank you.
That's nine votes for Jason DiMarco. DiMarco is now part of the neighborhood board, so I need to go office. Is that okay?
Right, yep, we are. We're going to recess for a minute. Anson, please do the office, and then we'll get into our business afterwards.
Yep. DiMarco, please, copy what I say.
Yes, I can.
Repeat. Okay, solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully support the Constitution and the law of the United States of America.
That I will faithfully support the laws and Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Hawaii.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Hawaii.
The Charter and laws of the city and county of Honolulu.
The Charter and laws of the city and county of Honolulu.
And the provisions of the neighborhood plan.
And the provisions of the neighborhood plan.
And will conscientiously and impartially discharge my duties.
And will conscientiously and impartially discharge my duties.
To the best of my ability as a member.
To the best of my ability as a member.
Of the neighborhood board to which I have been elected.
To the neighborhood board of which I have been elected.
Okay, all good.
Thank you, and thank you, members of the board.
All right, we are back in session. Thank you, Jason DiMarco, for being willing to serve on the board and for being our newest member. And I thank you as well to Mr. He for running, and I'm sorry that we couldn't get you on. So now that we've done all that, we are finally here for the item that I think most of our residents are attending for, which is item number four A, or excuse me, four B. Motion to adopt the resolution opposing Aria Lane slash Saint Francis School application. So I did work with some community members to draft this resolution. Because of that, I'm going to be presenting on it, which means that I'm going to need to pass the gavel to a first vice chair Bosel for this agenda item. So
Thank you.
Vice Chair Bosel, you are now acting chair, and I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, and we're going to just walk through the resolution, and then I'll do a motion to
He's going to present, and then I would like to make a call.
All right.
Anson, do you mind muting yours when you're, okay?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
All right, Chair, am I good to share screen and present?
Yes, please proceed. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Here we go. All right, can you hear me? Okay?
Yes, can hear you.
All right, so I'm just going to read through the resolution, and then afterwards, we can do a motion discussion. So it reads, "Resolution urging the Department of Planning and Permitting to deny the application for the Aria Lane project at the former Saint Francis School site." Manoa Neighborhood Board Number Seven, August seventh, twenty fourteen, today. Whereas Saint Francis School was founded in nineteen twenty-four, during as a Franciscan educational institution that taught students from pre-kindergarten through twelfth grade. And whereas Saint Francis School closed in twenty nineteen, and whereas House Bill two fifty-eight in twenty twenty-three introduced by Representative Andrew Takuya Garrett, and Senate Bill fifteen oh eight, also twenty twenty-three, introduced by Senator Carol Fukunaga, both would have appropriated funds for the University of Hawaii system to purchase the eleven-acre Saint Francis School property. And whereas HB two five eight and SB fifteen oh eight both failed to pass in twenty twenty-three and were not reconsidered in twenty twenty-four. And whereas the Sisters of Saint Francis of the Newman Communities sold the eleven-acre Saint Francis School property to Avalon Group. And whereas Representative of RM Towel Corporation gave presentations to the Manoa Neighborhood Board on May first, twenty twenty-four, and June fifth, twenty twenty-four, in which she introduced, in which she announced the proposed Aria Lane project at the former Saint Francis School site and provided information on the project. And whereas the University of Hawaii at Manila previously allowed use of its campus for entry and exit of Saint Francis School when the latter institution was still active. And whereas the University of Hawaii at Manoa has not indicated a willingness to let residents of the proposed Aria Lane project use the university campus for ingress and egress. And whereas on May seventh, twenty twenty-four, one of our previous meetings, the man, or excuse me, they'll come up later. Whereas on May seven, twenty twenty-four, the manager of the University of Hawaii at Manoa's Work Coordination Center sent an email that quoted the UH Director of Strategic Development and Partnership as saying that, quote, "The former Saint Francis School property located at TMK one, two, dash, nine, dash, zero, zero, four, colon, zero, zero, one has only one legal roadway access, which is through Pumoa Road. There are no legal roadway accesses or easements that come through property owned by the University of Hawaii, and there are no current agreements that allow access onto which property," end quote. And whereas if residents of the proposed Aria Lane project can't use the University of Hawaii at Manoa campus to enter or exit Aria Lane, then the only possible point of ingress or egress for Aria Lane residents would be Pumoa Road. And whereas according to the Honolulu Department of Planning and Permitting subdivision street standards, Part One, Section one, dash, five, an access roadway with a width of twenty feet is fit for no more than twenty-five dwelling units. And whereas Pumoa Road would be the only access roadway for Aria Lane and has a width of twenty feet. And whereas the current plan for the Aria Lane project would include three hundred sixty parking spaces and ninety-three dwellings units, with the total number of dwelling units rising to one hundred seventy-two if eighties are counted. And whereas Pumoa Road is currently a site of major pedestrian traffic due to being the only road that accesses the University of Hawaii in the east-west center from the northern side of campus. And whereas Pumoa Road, unlike University Avenue and Dul Street, serves as a pedestrian thoroughfare due to the lack of sidewalks, causing pedestrians and motor vehicles to occupy the road at the same time in a narrow space. And whereas multiple community members have raised concerns that the Aria Lane Project's neighborhood board presentations, which were previously, and on the Malama Saint Francis Manoa website, which include a greater risk of complications in the event of emergency evacuations, such as evacuations caused by recurring fires on Waikela Ridge, greater potential for traffic gridlock during peak hours that would impede access to emergency vehicles and block residents needing to reach emergency services, and greater risk for lethal vehicular accidents at the Alaula, or excuse me, Alaula University intersection, the Alaula Pumoa intersection and the Blind Crest on Alaula. And whereas the Saint Francis property is the site of many old trees that provide shade, cooling, soil retention benefits, and a mitigating factor against climate change, the loss of which would contribute to the years-long decline of Hawaii's tree canopy that has been documented by the US Forest Service, as well as possibly reduce walkability, especially for children, Capuna, or sensitive to heat. And whereas the Saint Francis property provides habitats for the Manuaku, White Fairy Turn, and Kalea, Pacific Golden Plover, both of which are designated as threatened species, form being recognized as a species of moderate concern by the North American Waterbird Conservation Plan and by the Regional Seabird Conservation Plan of the US Fish and Wildlife Service twenty twenty-five, or excuse me, two thousand and five. And the latter being a species of greatest conservation need in Hawaii's state wildlife action plan. And whereas the Saint, excuse me, and whereas the Saint Francis property is the site of ancient Hawaiian haial, documented by archaeologist Carol Koachi nineteen eighty-eight, that has potential for further study. And the Saint Francis property was originally built with donations from residents of the Kalalpapa Leprosy Colony to honor a canonized saint, Mother Mary in cope, and provide a retirement place for Sisters of the Third Franciscan Order, making the Saint Francis property a storied site for both Native Hawaiian and Catholic traditions. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Honolulu Department of Planning and Permitting is urged to deny the application for the Aria Lane project at the former Saint Francis School site. And be it further resolved that copies of this resolution should be transmitted to the Director of the Department of Planning and Permitting, the Governor of the State of Hawaii, each member of the Hawaii State Legislature, the Mayor of the City and County of Honolulu, each city council, excuse me, each council member of the City and County of Honolulu, President of the University of Hawaii at Manoa, and each member of the University of Hawaii Systems Board of Regents. So that's the resolution. I know that our board has had a couple discussions on this. I honestly don't know where most of my fellow board members stand on the issue, so I would prefer to move this resolution out tonight, but I definitely do want us to see where everyone is at. Since we're in a meeting, we can discuss it as a group and see where, what all of us are thinking pursuant to sunshine law. And this is also a chance for the community members who came out to voice their concerns to either help us pass this resolution or to be included in perhaps a future resolution, depending on how our discussion goes. So with that, Chair, my presentation and opening remarks are finished. I'm going to make a resolution to pass the resolution so that we can then move on to discussion. So I make the motion.
I make a motion to present this resolution to the board for a vote. We need a second. We second.
I second, number Watson.
Okay, so it's up for a vote. Can we have a discussion on this first now?
Oh, yes, yes, we can. It's good.
Okay, so I believe somebody in Anson's orbit, I don't know if that's member Moylan, had his first comment.
Can I go?
Yeah.
Okay, so an answer to the question to see how the other board members are feeling. So the first thing I want to say, I thought this was unusually well-written. So now that I found out you wrote it, Dave, that explains that to me. The key sticking point you've emphasized in your paragraph seven through ten, the difficult egress and ingress to the site now that the UH property is no longer used as it was when the school was operating. That's, that's the key sticking point. That's the objection we've heard from most of the citizens. But of course, we've also heard from some people, UH employees and others who need housing, that they would love to see some extra housing go in here, and it would be nice if our neighborhood occasionally chipped in to try to help solve the city problem. So the point I just want to make is, we don't have only two choices here, which is up or down in this resolution. The kind of thing that we used to do when I was on a city council would be, we would say, we would approve the project under the condition that you get that other entryway opened up, so it solves the traffic problem. And then you'd fix the housing issue, and you'd also fix the big concern with the project. So one other option we have, rather than simply endorsing this, is to do what's implied by your paragraph seven to ten, that if we didn't have this difficult problem getting vehicles in and out, it might be a worthy project. And then if we sent that on, saying we, we think that, you know, the, the project could be improved if you make this developer and UH work out some deal between themselves, however they do that, that now the other road in and out can be used the way it used to be used when it was a school, where the traffic apparently wasn't that terrible a problem. I think that would clean up the main problem of this project, and then it would also do what we are all being asked to do, which is try to find ways to mitigate the gap between supply and demand in our neighborhood. So I just throw that out as an alternative that we could do, as opposed to just simply yes, no, and we're done. Thank you.
Thank you, member Moylan. Next, I believe Patty Kwanau had her hand up.
Yes, thank you, Chair Whitney. My question is, I saw, and I forgot which item number it is, it talked about that location has ancient Hawaiian haial. And I, we called our discussion that it was not confirmed. I just wanted to ask about that because I would not, I would not like to vote on something that's not factual, but is hearsay or to, you know, trump up opposition. I just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Nagaji, can you speak to that?
Sure, so the information about the haial and the tree species and bird species came from a resident. And she did for the, for the haial part, send me part of a, some sort of article or an excerpt from a book that was, that referred to an archaeologist. And if Ellen Sophia was here, she can give more detail. So I don't know anything about, you know, archaeological methods, so I can't say how, how certain we are that this is the case, but there is at least one, one text, one document that would say that there is a haial there.
Thank you, member.
Okay, and I was just wondering, you know, if that's the case, I assume that this day have some kind of protection and requiring the developer to do something about it and not just destroyed it and build that. So I'm a little surprised to see that being on our resolution to include that wording. That's one of my concerns.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go next to member Watson.
Thank you, Whitney. I, I support this resolution, and I'm against this development. And I, you know, the roads is and the traffic and the pedestrians, you know, is just on its face a terrible situation. And the developer and UH cannot come to terms to solve that problem because in order to solve that problem, UH would have to grant the residents that live there and the guests that come and visit there, and anybody and everybody else to cut through campus all the time to get to cut through campus all the time to get to the housing development. And there is absolutely, positively no guarantee that any of that housing will be given to faculty, to, 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 to whatever. It's not going to be affordable. It's unaffordable housing. They're going to be sold as basic housing with an ADU that the people could rent out rather than have grandma come live there. So you're going to have double the cars, double the occupancy. UH is not going to ever let a commercial housing project cross through their campus, ever. And, um, so they have no, no compulsion whatsoever to solve this at all. And they're not going to get into the, into it. And, um, I, I don't like it also because it will have an A O A O, right, or H O A. And it will have a, a board that makes up its house rules. And that board is made up of homeowners that have nothing else to do except sit on a board. Ellen? I, I've been a part of them, and these are not skilled business people that run the complex and make the rules. And they just hammer on the residents because they're just kind of compulsive and like to make people do certain, or not do certain things. So I support the resolution and I don't think as Board Member Moylan suggests, that the UH and the developer could huddle and solve the traffic problem. That is not going to be happening, and this is not housing provided for faculty or anybody whatsoever associated with universities. Okay. My time's exceeded. Is that, is that true?
Thank you, Ellen.
Then, um, I'm gonna next call on Member Fukamoto.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, I'm, I'm in support of the substance of, of this resolution. I do have a couple of questions about, uh, the factual situation in which, um, what is being asked for is that the depart- the DPP deny this application. So I, I think resolution should say that number one, there is a, a city ordinance that requires in this particular kind of case, a certain kind of approval by the DPP, and another paragraph saying that in the, in this particular process, there is a, an application pending by the Aria Lane Group for approval by the D, DPP. Now, um, it's not in the current resolution, but if, uh, if the Chair can assure me that these are facts that are applicable here, uh, I'm willing to vote for this resolution. Thank you, Chair.
Can, can you make those written changes right now, Dave Nagaji? If Elton tells them to you, can you write them in the document right now?
Yes, Elton, can you, can you say that, um, again, but slower?
Okay, um, one whereas paragraph would, uh, cite the city ordinance uh, under which the DPP, uh, would approve this subdivision.
Okay, and what would the other?
And the next paragraph would say that, um, Aria Lane Project, uh, application is now will be, is now in front of the DPP or will be, uh, will be submitted to the DPP for approval.
Once, uh, I'm going to share my screen. Oh, uh, was there anything else, Elton, or just, just those two items?
Can you confirm that there is already an application in? Is that, is that what I'm understanding from what Member Fukamoto was asking and you're adding in here?
Um, I thought what Fukamoto was saying was that, um, there will be an application. Um, it's my understanding there is not yet an application that Avalon has made.
Okay.
Okay, but, but, um, in, in the, in the process, there, they have to, um, the DPP does have to approve this.
So could it be something like, um, the Aria Lane project requires DPP's approval to go forward?
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, that, that's anything close. Yeah, that's fine.
Perhaps something to the effect of upon submittal of, you know, of said application, we urge DPP to reject it?
That'd be good.
So when you're done typing it, you're gonna read us that section, Dave?
Yes, I will screen share it in a second.
Do you want a moment? And I can call on some of the other members for comments while you're finishing.
Sure. So I want to hear if they all set up amendments or anything.
Okay, um, I believe Member Coff had her hand up next. As far as members go.
I was harking back to the idea that there is need for housing in Manoa. And if, if a project could be developed that was scaled way back and respectful of the trees and wildlife that's been, you know, in Ha'as, whatever was important to was, to co- preserve. And then, uh, so, uh, figure out and make a deal with UH if UH would do it, if they could achieve. I, I think we want to not only be this board that just sort of trounces on anything that wants to develop, but really consider what it is that, that we'd like to have in our community. And I don't think single-family dwellings are the worst thing that can happen to us. That's what we live in, you know? So it's just the scale of this thing is wrong to me. The scale, and it's not respectful of the environment in many, many ways. And I think another way of handling it is to recommend that a full EIS be ordered on it because this in, it affects the environment in terms of transportation, in terms of, uh, protected, uh, wildlife, in terms of protected, um, uh, natural habitat. And then also lastly, possibly haial, uh, so, so because you have a number of categories, you could, uh, get a full EIS on the thing. So you could slow them down to really get this thing tightened up and make it useful for our community. Not this sort of monstrosity that becomes like a monster home, basically, and just an outsized monster home, which is what we, I think.
Thank you, Member Coff. Um, I think Member Zane is the, uh, board member I see with their hand raised.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, one point of comment, uh, there's in the written comments, uh, Mr. Elmer Kai of University of Hawaii actually wrote as a clarification to the whereas clause regarding Saint Francis as the only entrance and exit on the northern part of the campus. He says that there is another pathway. So if, um, Chair, you may want to consider calling on Elmer to give a little more clarification about the access to this, to the Saint Francis campus location to clarify that point that might be prudent.
Um, thank you, Member Zane. Is Elmer on? I didn't see him. Elmer, if you are, just go ahead and speak up. I'm not.
Chair.
Oh, hi, yes.
So I just wanted to clarify. I think that whereas clause is not necessary, we actually do have another, actually, I'm in wake for us to actually go from upper campus to lower campus. It just happens to be a convenience that, that particular access is there, but we do have one. So I would maybe suggest this delete that clause. It's not necessary.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I would, I'm just trying to refer to the clause as as, um, I'm, I'm gonna go to, oh, yes.
Um, I, I don't want to delete that language yet. I want to hear from, uh, community members, um, their, their response to what, um, Elmer Kai said on that.
Agreed. Okay, so, um, if you're ready though, Member Nagaji, to share your screen, if you want to show the updates that you previously did, if you feel like that's relevant, just quite briefly, the two things that, for Fukamoto.
Um, so the grammar might be a bit off, but we, we, we can do grammatical corrections outside of meeting uh, if we approve it. So this is what it currently looks like.
Yeah.
Um, I, I've underlined the, um.
I, I don't think we can share or see your screen yet. Do you want to share your screen? Oh, there we go.
Can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay, so I had one paragraph that says, uh, whereas pursuant to the City and County of Honolulu statute, insert session here because I would need to look it up, but I can do that after the meeting if Members are okay with me doing that. Um, so pursuant to the statute, insert statute here, uh, the Department of Planning and Permitting is responsible for approving proposed development projects. And whereas the Aria Lane project will require the Department of Planning and Permitting's approval in order to proceed, and then in the result, uh, dimensions, um, that we're urging them to deny the application upon its approval. So, um, is that, is that good for what Member Fukamoto was suggesting?
Yeah, upon its submittal is what you have written.
Excuse me, upon its middle.
Yes, middle. Submittal is, is what you have written, and that's correct. Okay. Okay, so, um, thank you. I think the community has had a moment to, and we'll continue. Um, are there, I do see Elton, yes, your hand is raised.
Yes, um, the word statute should be replaced by the word ordinance. Chair, Chair Nagaji.
All right, I'm making that change right now, other than that it is, um, going to be the same.
Okay, so I'm gonna move on to members of the community unless, I, I actually have a question, um, because I've been out of town for like a month. Is there anything that happened? This is, I, I guess to Member Nagaji, since you, uh, drafted this, I'd like to know if there had been any developments in this since the town halls were held with Aria Lane in regards to sort of the speed at which they're moving on this. I, I'm wondering basically how necessary it is to have this pinned down at this meeting.
Um, I, I would prefer to move it out of this meeting, but Chair, to be perfectly frank to your question, um, Avalon Group, um, the, the tell company, they have not yet submitted an application. So if the board objects to the timing, we could, um, withdraw. We, we could do that if, if necessary.
Okay, so as far as we know, there's, there's nothing that has been moved on and, and they haven't presented any new, um, presentations since the, the three town halls that they held?
Uh, not that I'm aware, but I think that, um, community members would probably know better than me if there had been any updates, so. And, and if there's a lot of them to come here tonight specifically to, um, to speak on this. So I, I would encourage Chair to, um, call on commu- community members and them give their oral testimony.
Perfect, yes. I think we're moving on. I, oh, I do see, oh, Member Watson's hand has moved down. So we're gonna move on to members of the community now. Um, I, I think Alan Lau had his hand up.
Avalon did present to our board after their town hall meetings and said they were moving forward. So I think we need to pass this resolution post haste.
Okay, thank you, Member Watson. Uh, mo- sorry, Mr. Lau.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Um, I've submitted in writing, uh, my feelings about this program, so I would encourage the board members to read it. I, I just still want to reiterate the fact that, uh, even when Saint Francis was in session, or when they were, when they had school, the traffic was terrible, even though they had egress through the, to, to the rear, uh, exit. Uh, my home sustained two major hits from cars, uh, during that time. And, uh, I've, I've, as before, I've documented in emails between me and HPD and at that time Ann Kobayashi's office. And I just want to say, it's, it's still happening. Uh, I was backing into my garage within the last two Fridays, when a car ran the stop sign, tried to get around me and sideswiped me and move, and, and ran away. I, I have cameras, so my, I have, I have a realization camera, so I got everything on, on film, and I called HPD. But, uh, I just can't see how a housing thing like this is, is not going to affect the amount of traffic going through here, and when it's already, in my opinion, pretty bad, and you know, if, if you're the one who's, who's, whose house it hit several times, uh, you know, I, I think you guys would understand how I feel.
Thank you, Mr. Lau. Um, I'm gonna go next to Ellen Sofia. Ellen?
Yes, uh, okay, um, okay, first, I just want to say that I, I was gonna say that I stand on my testimony, my written testimony and strong support of this resolution. Uh, not, uh, because I feel it is critical for the, uh, preservation and protection and for the public health and safety and historic and environmental integrity of all of Manoa Valley. As someone who's lived here, um, since I was ten years old, uh, since nineteen sixty-seven, and, um, I feel, you know, and as a physician, uh, because I think this project is, uh, is actually dangerous for public safety for a number of reasons. Uh, not only the, um, increased risk of lethality for motor vehicle accidents and motor vehicle pedestrian and bicycle accidents through a large part of the valley that will be entailed by putting three hundred and sixty cars back here. Uh, and the a thousand plus additional trips per day that that's going to cause on our already over-busy streets and intersections, um, endangering children and other vulnerable, uh, people. I also think it's going to be bad for the public health of many, uh, vulnerable families and particularly, uh, vulnerable kapuna who live in the, um, surrounding area and the immediate neighborhood. Having said that, I wanted to clarify for Patty Kowano, uh, member, uh, board member Kowano, that, uh, yes, I, I, uh, have researched the haial. Uh, I'm still in the process of researching it. I've been a presentation to the, uh, City's, uh, Historic Preservation Commission. Um, I'm finishing the presentation at the end of this month. It's a two-part presentation. Uh, the State Historic Preservation Division has a team assigned to the project, not just because of the haial, but because of the historic buildings on the property which are almost a century old, including the convent and the chapel, um, as well as the school. Uh, and Carol Kawachi in nineteen eighty-eight was the archaeologist that first recorded the haial. The literature that I took that from is from the Manoa Heritage Center. And I think many people here know that, uh, Mary Cook and her family preserved the Ku- uh, and reconstructed the Ku'ka'o'o haial, uh, behind the Cook Mansion on Manoa Road. And so there's an entire chapter in this book about the archaeology of Manoa Valley. It has a map. It has, uh, a, a chart with a listing of archaeological sites. Both the map and the chart list specifically lists Saint Francis as the site of a haial. Uh, and there's narratives in the chapter that refer to the Saint Francis Haial site. So, uh, it's not something that's just, uh, in question. Uh, the second thing I wanted to address is, um, Member Joan Coff's, uh, statement about an EIS. I'm totally in agreement that this project should require a full-scale EIS. But the reality is that both the DPP, even though they have not even accepted the application yet, and the developer herself, Christine Count, are claiming that they do not, they are not going to require or be required to do an EIS. So that may be a matter for further court battle. But right now, we're just trying to cut to the quick of it, of what the reality of the situation is, and nip this in the bud to save everybody a lot of time and agony and, uh, save the valley, basically. So.
Thanks, Ellen.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Sophia. Um, I'm gonna go next to, I believe, Tom Heinrich had his name up or hand up next.
Yes, uh, thank Chair. A couple of things real quick here. Excuse me. Uh, first, I appreciate the question uh that I especially had as to where are we in the process? And for the statements made, uh if no application has been uh submitted yet or formally accepted uh because you're at a different point then on the clock, uh then, uh Dave, I would uh suggest that you just double check the language so that the application is anticipated or expected, whatever. It's anticipatory uh in terms of the timing. Um, secondly, uh, I absolutely commend the writing of this resolution. It is clear and it has a singular focus. In that regard, I especially wanted to emphasize from earlier comments made at the beginning of this discussion uh that it is not the neighborhood board's role to determine the actual use in the process. Whatever else we would like to see or all those kinds of things. Right now, the singularity of the focus of the resolution uh is in fact its uh strength. And as well, the neighborhood board uh and the community as a whole was not earlier consulted in the land acquisition process or in other things that way. So uh, you know, in in this regard, speaking in my individual capacity, I support the resolution. Um, and certainly think it is uh a strong and good position of this neighborhood board uh to adopt it, particularly with the focus that is provided by it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heinrich. Um, I'm gonna go next to, I believe, Mr. Howard Luke, and then uh, Mr. Ron Brown, you'll be after that, and then we'll go on to other members.
Yes, thank you. And can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Uh, thank you. You know, I've submitted a letter in support of the resolution. And um as approximately twenty-plus individuals have done to my understanding. I I strongly urge the members of the board to read all of those letters, pro and con. Um, and I have written in my letter the um the the reasons for my opposition. I've really spent a lot of time uh investigating the viability of the plan as well as the um whether or not it would make sense for the members of the community at large, not simply Manoa, but all those who are seeking housing. Uh, by way of background, I'll I'll just be really brief on this. You know, I I've served on numerous nonprofits and have been the chair of many nonprofits. And um I know how difficult it is to make a decision. But I um I strongly urge the members of the board to be conversant with the materials that have been written, particularly those in opposition to the project and supporting the resolution. Uh, I want to, because I see her name on the calendar, I want to thank Ms. Camp, who is the um, you know, the uh CEO of Avalon Group, uh promoting Aria Lane for inviting me to meet with her and her attorneys for purposes of discussing the project. I I at least I appreciate that. I see Leana Luke, who is the attorney for Avalon, also present. And I want to recognize uh my appreciation despite my fervent opposition to the project. Uh, what I want to do, I mean, in in the limited amount of time, is I want to respond uh uh to some of the uh concerns individuals had and some of the observations I think that can be clarified. And in in order of the presentation, I will skip some people because there's no need for response. The first one, Mr. Yu, uh, Mr. Wu, I'm sorry, uh, the difficulty of ingress and egress of the property may be mitigated, as you indicated, by access to, or it would actually be East West Center Road and then an option to take either Miley Way or or um East West Center Road to get to Doe Street. I have had two meetings with President Lasner and Vice Presidents regarding this issue. On both occasions, I've been told in no uncertain terms that they will not open that lane for um access by the Aria Lane project. So that's the answer. I mean, unless it changes in the future, that's the answer. Second, um, Ms. Sophia and Ms. Kawano talked about the um the veracity of some of the Hawaiian archaeological issues that are um part of this uh, like the concern regarding the property. The Sisters of Saint Francis out of the Syracuse, New York, did conduct, at their request, a very exhaustive I, you know, review of the archaeological sites in the property. As a result, an eighty-two-page report was provided for the potential developers of the property. And I, when I say eighty-two pages, I mean eighty-two pages of single-spaced, very dense, complicated and thorough analysis resulting in a conclusion at the end of their study as to exactly where the uh issues regarding uh Hawaiian artifacts, archaeological sites, uh kupuna, uh EV and other concerns that would be relevant to the to the Hawaiian community. I think that uh another one, I'm gonna jump over Ms. Watson's uh testimony or request because I think she's um, she's uh provided a a pretty good analysis of the resolution and why it should be um why it should be approved. Mr. Fukamoto, I think it was, uh, on the um the resolution and questions regarding DPP status, I have been in touch and in communication with the Department of Planning and Permitting. Um, and uh I have been told by the person who is responsible for reviewing the permit application that she would contact me personally once the permit is filed. I have not been contacted, and I assume for that reason, the permit has not been filed. The uh, the other question uh that was, another observation that was made really surprises me because um I I don't know exactly what is referred to, but um, Mr. Kai um, the, there was a statement that we have another uh entrance uh or exit at the upper and lower campus. I'm not sure what that refers to. If it's access through Mid-Pacific Institute, I can uh tell you that there is a great opposition by some of the residents of the contiguous roads to that um to that access, but it is not from Aria Lane. Aria Lane has only two possible um entrances and exits, and that's through either Pomoa Road, a twenty-foot-wide road that has been designated by uh the Department of Planning and Permitting to uh be, to accommodate up to twenty-five houses. Certainly not the uh one hundred seventy-plus residential units that are being planned and uh clearly not the three hundred sixty potential parking uh spaces uh that they don't necessarily mean that there are gonna be cars in every space, but even if you divide that by half, uh, we already have uh calculated that there could be over one thousand trips on the road. For those of you who are unfamiliar with the road, and I'll conclude with this, I have a lot of more things to say, and if you have any questions, I'll I'd be happy to answer them because I really have spoken to a lot of uh people involved in the um, in the project yourself. But the the only other thing is that if you visit the road, if you go now, it doesn't look too bad. You can drive on that road. There's only one continuously uh available lane because it's parking one side of the road, as you know. You know, the parking width of a car, it's a lane is, you know, what, eight to nine feet? So only one car can go through it at a, at a, any given time. But beyond that, there's another issue, and and that is, yes.
Sorry, I uh, I, at this point, uh, you finish up your conversation real quickly.
Yeah, can you wrap it up, Mr. Luke?
I certainly will, and I know I'm uh going on, but I have so much information. If anybody wants to call me, my phone number is on the uh letter I submitted. The last thing I wanted to say is that if you look at the road now, it doesn't look too bad, but you wait till school starts. You have people coming from the maintenance yard, you have visitors from East West Center, you have freshman students as well as upperclassmen uh accessing the road, and you have, I'll tell you, people walking on the asphalt, mothers with strollers, et cetera. When Dr. Lau talks about his accident, I saw that, and I was very grateful. I thought somebody might have been injured when I saw those accidents. And they happen, uh, I think about two or three times, if I'm not correct, you know, if I'm not wrong, rather. So thanks very much, and any questions at all, please feel free to contact me. Thank you, Chairperson Zane.
I'm not the chair.
Thanks.
Former Chairperson Emeritus Zane, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. I would say, why don't you put your um phone number in the chat in case there are other communities, community members who wish to contact you unless you only want neighborhood board members to contact you, because we're the only
Any anyone can contact me. I'm I'm still working. I have my own law practice, but um I will uh, I'll be glad because it's such an important thing. I'll put it on the chat right away in it.
Um.
It's Brazil.
I, oh, Mr. Nagaji, yes, or Member Nagaji?
Very quick, Chair. I just wanted to note that um in response uh Elmer Kai has put in the chat a clarification that the other entrance is a uh walking pathway, not a full road. Thanks.
Okay. Um.
Uh, point of, point of order as well. It's nine o'clock. We have less than an hour left on other stuff. Um, depending on uh how long you want to stay on this subject, I just want to give you a heads up on that.
Thank you, former Chair Zane. Um, let's move to uh other community members who have been waiting, and I know Mr. Brown, Ron Brown.
Yes.
But do try to comment uh efficient.
Yes, thank you. Um. The traffic congestion problem on Pomoa Road is a true terrific problem, but the problem is really wider than that. Everyone who wants to leave Pomoa, that Pomoa area, has to go on Pomoa Road. But also, everyone who lives on Hippaway has to go on Pomoa Road. And most of those people go on Pomoa Road will then take Alaula. And so, and Alaula, Alaula is also a narrow, one-way road. And I often have to wait in order to get through there. And it's not just Alaula, but there are many, there are several streets that have to use Alaula to leave the community. Parker Way, Malama Place, Hopin Way, all those things. So there could be enormous traffic congestion over a wide area affecting hundreds and hundreds of people, including the potential people who would live in Aria Lane. They would also face these terrible problems. I can imagine traffic backing up on Alaula all the way to Pomoa. It's partly because when you get to the end of Alaula, you come to Owahu, which has very heavy traffic, and it's hard to turn onto them. And and if I can say something about the the walking access, the walking access to the upper campus goes through private property. And it's could be dangerous. It's a, it's basically, it goes through a driveway that's nine feet wide that services two houses with lined curves. And I I would hate to think with, you know, uh, oh, a hundred, sorry, with several hundred new bedrooms, a pack of children walking along that li- that narrow lane going across a blind curve, encountering cars. I I think it's just a recipe for disaster. I think that the um
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
The uh project really has to be rejected. That's that I, that's enough.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I'm gonna go to Anson or somebody in that room there.
Oh, yeah, um, a community member wants to testify also.
Okay.
Okay, he's coming up. He's
Ready to go?
Yeah.
Hi, my name is uh Gerald Seitzel, and uh I live on Pomoa Road. Uh, my home happens to be two homes away from what they call the fire lane. And so that fire lane is widely used by students and and other people to access the Manoa campus out outside of going down to Saint Francis. And because of the uh proximity of that fire lane, I can tell you or Pembroke Moilin, that even during the summertime, right now, if you come anytime from uh six, six-thirty in the morning, because that's when the employees park. In the old days, when Saint Francis was in school in session, there was no parking just prior to school opening and and at the end of school. So there were two times during the day where there were no parking on the street because the street was so congested. So even during school time, when Saint Francis was in, the city recognized that that street was heavily used. So that's the reason why they had no parking, so that the school buses would easily access the thing. Okay, so uh, the thing is, even right now, during the summertime, when there's supposed to be no school or or very little, or just summer school, there is a ton of people still parking on the street.
I was there today. I saw it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so, you know, it, we have a very narrow street, and and what this development is all about is we have about fifty homes on Pomoa Road. And this development is proposing to double it. I, you know, you, if you look at the fact that we have fifty-one homes on a street that is no more than three tenths of a mile and and it's, I wouldn't say it's just back to the gills, but then who in his right mind would think that putting in doubled amount of homes is logical? Okay, so with that, you know, that's about it, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, thanks. Point of order, Chair. Um, when you're muted still.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
Yeah, um, if, yeah, I guess making announcements to the community, we understand everybody's concerns, especially about the road and the traffic concerns along uh Pomoa Road especially and this development. Um, because of the limited time we have tonight, and we do need to get to the voting portion of this as well. If somebody has made your point already about the road, um, you're more than welcome to bandwagon on them and just have, have them say basically what you, what you just, what's been going around. But we want any new comments over. We would strongly encourage that, and if you already have something you want that's already been repeated, please take your hand down so we can move on with the agenda.
Thank you. Uh, yes, I'd like to echo that. Let's all be efficient. Um, I do think that if you've got new information, that's very useful, but uh, we did all receive your your comments. I'm going to um go next to Ms. Michelle Clark.
Hi, aloha. My name's Michelle Clark, and I'm a resident of Pomoa Road. Um, my family's been there, or I'm about third, fourth generation. We've been there um since the nineteen forties, so not myself personally, but from my grandparents' time, and my family has been there. Um, I've been, you know, in the area. I know Pomoa Road well and know that it is, as everyone has said, incredibly busy road already. And, you know, I actually did speak with Christine Camp to see what her opinion was on scaling down the development considerably, because, you know, with ninety or hundred houses, again, it's just too much. She made it clear that, no, they would not be willing to scale it down, or said that they did scale it down by what, five or so homes, but they were not interested in scaling it anymore. So anyway, I just came on today to make sure that the testimony I sent online um got to you and to encourage all of the Manoa Neighborhood Board to please vote in favor of this resolution to um, you know, ask the Department of Permitting and Planning to uh not accept or um to deny this application for Aria Lane. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Okay, we're gonna have um Mr. Churchill and then Kurt Takara, and then I think we have to close this so that we can move on. So, Mr. Churchill?
Thank you so very much, Chairman. I'd like to strongly support this uh resolution, resolution uh and oppose Aria Lane. Just very quickly. Um, this development is looking to double the density of this corner of Manoa. We have roughly a hundred and twenty um dwellings on all of Pomoa, Hippiwai, Alaula, Parker, and Malama, total one-twenty, and they're looking to add another hundred and seventy-two in small lots. in small lots on the end of a dead-end alley. Um, so I just think the size of it is way and the density is 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 out of control. Um, and as far as access with the University of Hawaii, I think it's important that you would need a permanent easement from the university and not just an agreement. Because if you built, assuming that you had an agreement and for some reason UH needed to change um, their layout or their planning and we lost that access, then we have all of these these homes built and our access is back to strictly Pomoa again. So it's a permanent easement that we need, not an agreement with the university. Um, because we we really do, once this is developed, um, it's developed forever. Once we lose educational land, we can never get it back. Um, the value of this land once developed will be two hundred million dollars minimum. So we're 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 losing an educational asset here. Um, and it's really important that we take it slow. We keep the character of Manoa as is and and do what benefits the larger community. Um, so again, I strongly support this resolution and oppose Aria Lane, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Churchill. Um, next was Mr. Takara. And then I do see that Christine Camp has her hand raised, and so I would like to hear from her and then we will close this off. Mr. Takara? Kurt Takara? Uh, I'm not hearing anything from Kurt Takara, so. Oh, okay. So, uh, Ms. Camp?
Thank you very much and uh, try to be as succinct as possible. First of all, thank you. Um, and I heard all the neighbors of, and I've read their testimony. I've met with many of you and I know that this is very jarring and concerning. Um, I want to address that we are still working through traffic issues. And um, if I could ask you to defer your action until we actually have a permanent process. Um, and when you have an opportunity, I would very much appreciate the time for us to work through the traffic matter. We did reduce our density and my comment was that the more I reduce density, the less affordable these homes will be. So we are trying to keep the density, the number of units, ninety-three. We originally came at one oh five during the time that we spoke to everyone, but we actually pulled that down from hundred and thirty-eight when we first looked at our plans. So we've come down significantly and what we're trying to do right now is still try to work for a solution related to traffic, meaning additional access points. And uh, we haven't given up yet. And this is why that, you know, our our process has been relatively slow since you've started. The thing that I'd wanted to address is um, we are going through our process of we hired archaeologists, cultural practitioners. And I can tell you that the reports that we've looked at, the same report that was given to us and working through the archaeologists, we have not confirmed that there are hayos on our property. What we will be doing is following the state law, working with Shipti, State Historic Preservation Division, to work through anything that we need to do to be legal and to do right by the property. As it relates to um, anything else that we can control within our property, we will be working through that. And so what I ask for your consideration at this time is if you could wait until the next month's meeting um, to defer so that we can at least report back to you if there are any changes. Um, I do understand traffic is a concern. I have heard and met with many of you and I understand your concern. And so we will try to work through that, but um, everything else that we can control within our property, we're doing our best. But the one thing that I cannot give up on is the less units that we deliver, the more expensive these homes will have to be. And someone had suggested to me that I should I should build three million dollar homes or I should build just thirty units or fifty units. And that's an opportunity for us of allowing people to live um, multi-generationally within one household. And I still think, and 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 this is why I feel so passionate, I still think that it is the right path if I can just find some solutions for traffic mitigation. So I will still continue to work through that. Thank you. Uh, I can show you the map, the 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 reference to the archaeological study that was done by the sisters. We have the exact same property. We've gone through the map. We've interviewed with the um, the archaeologists as well as cultural um, descendants and we've reported to a State Historic Preservation Division and we will be working through them.
Can, um, Ms. Camp, can I ask you two questions?
Sure.
Um, can you tell us how close you feel you guys are to submitting to DPP an application? You're asking us to hold off, but I think it's.
Yeah, so so as you know, so we have submitted for their cursory review. We haven't received a word that they've accepted the application yet.
Okay, so, okay.
We submitted just uh, last week, Friday, or I think either Monday. I I just came back from a trip. So um, we did submit, but what the submittal process is that they have to accept it. Um, and they haven't accepted yet, or I haven't gotten a confirmation they have accepted yet. What will happen is this is not gonna get approved in thirty days. They will be notifying you um, uh, as to the, you know, the next process, which is a public hearing process.
Okay, thank you. And um, I I don't know, I see Elmar is still on. I know that it was stated that, you know, there was no way access would be allowed through UH. Was there discussion between UH and Avalon about perhaps Avalon selling a portion of the property back to UH?
There's a lot of things that have been suggested. Um, there is many things that we've been discussing with them. Um, I, we haven't given up. The conversation or the email that came to one of the um, uh, people that, you know, testified, um, I can't ascertain to that. Uh, their position has always been that, um, you know, emergency access will be provided. And all the rest of it, we still have to work through it. And I haven't given up yet.
Well, just I I think that's relevant as to the idea of, I I understand that it's not economically feasible to only put a small number of units if you own the entire property. But I guess I'm trying to understand, is it still under consideration to potentially sell back part of the property to UH? And then develop fewer units, fewer, you know.
It it will all have to be, it'll, it's really, we'll have to see. Um, that is, you know, many of the suggestions and and considerations that others have suggested, uh, that is not been something that they've approached us about. Um, I I do know that they have their own concerns. So here's one thing that I would like to ask all of the neighbors. If they're concerned about the Pomoa Road, is if they could write a letter to the University of Hawaii Administration. Because they feel the reason why they're saying no, and one of the reasons, one of the major reasons is that they're worried about neighborhood. Um, blaming University of Hawaii for added traffic. And um, if Pomoa residents and Hippawai residents are really concerned about having the primary access at Pomoa Road, instead of stopping a residential project, if they could write a letter to the uh, University of Hawaii, supporting the idea that they should allow us to access from um, uh, University of Hawaii, that would be really helpful. And we are willing to compensate them to help with the roadway traffic mitigation, roadway maintenance. And we've approached that and it would be really helpful if all of the residents who are opposing our project could write a letter to the administration and let them know that you would support the opportunity for this housing project to access their road if we could use their road for ingress and egress and we we compensate them for that usage. If you would support it, I think that would help a lot.
Chair, point of order, point of order, Chair.
Yes, number one.
We need to, I think, hear from whatever residents are in this, instead of it being a a forum with the developer, the developers trying to ask the public to become its lobbyists, to press last, press Lassner into granting access. Love their housing. We're not doing that. So I think we have to move along and call the vote.
Chair, since since uh, time is of the essence, I suggest uh, calling on Howard Luke and asking him to give a response to what Christine Camp just said so that we can have some community uh, response to um, those arguments.
All of you, keep in mind that it is nine twenty.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, you know, I I'll try to be brief in response from this camp, uh, if, because I think people would might want to know what the response is. In the meeting with um, President Lassner and Vice President, I, uh, we we discussed that possibility. And they said, no, the main concern is uh, one of liability that uh, the the public university would open it to a private residential area. So even with with the um, options provided by Avalon, including compensating the university for use of the road, um, there was uh, pushback through the Department of uh, Safety at the university as well as maintenance and upkeep. And and that's my response. I know we're running out of time, but um, Ms. Camp, that was what I heard from them. So they 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 put the thumbs down on those options. Thank you. Oh, by the way, Kurt Kurt Takara tried to get on, but his uh, his uh, ability to communicate uh, is he's unable to call, uh, respond, even though he's on the line. He he just couldn't get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, at this time, I think I know that there are other people who might want to weigh in. But I do think that we're probably ready to to vote. I do see Ms. Coff has her hand raised again. If it's a point of order or it's extremely brief, um, as board member, I would say, go go quickly and then.
I just wanted to make the point that actually, the way I have understood it, once that application gets submitted, we've got thirty days. And so the application's already in. We don't know that tomorrow they don't, they're gonna just do it. And we don't have, if we wait, we may miss our chance. That's what I'm saying. And I don't know the rules on this, but I I thought that was what we we have to get our testimony in early.
Thank you, uh, Member Coff. Okay, so at this time, I think um, we don't have any other substantive changes that need to be made to the resolution. And so I'm gonna call for a vote on it. Uh, Anson, if you can call for.
Okay, um, this is for the corrections to the whereas in paragraph. Uh, what paragraph was it for the whereas?
Yeah, this is the vote on the amendments for the language.
Yeah, the two, the two amendments as suggested by Member Fukamoto. Um, I don't believe that we made any amendments as related to Mr. Kai's point, but the two amendments made um, as suggested by uh, Member Fukamoto.
Okay, um. So we're doing that first, okay? Uh, so for them.
If there's any objection to the language, if not.
Wait, we need, um, we need a motion. We need someone to spur.
This is to make those amendments.
I second.
Okay, and can we just do um, a a vote of ascension or whatever it's called where, as long as no one.
There's no objections to the language.
Thank you.
You can ask, you can ask if there's any objections to it, but is there?
That I'm not sure.
Just ask if there's any objections to the changes of the language.
Are there any objections to the changes?
Okay, everyone's here that has their camera on. We have nine. So that's okay.
Okay, so I'm hearing objections to the changes in the language. Do I hear a motion uh, to call a vote?
I make a motion to call a vote.
I second.
Okay.
I wanna vote on the motion. If nobody objects to the language, then it's passed by acclamation. And you can also do the same thing for the whole resolution. And you don't have to call a roll call vote unless someone votes against the resolution or has an objection.
Yes, so we're voting for the uh, the resolution opposing Daria Lane with amendments. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and Dave and uh, Bosel. Dave's first moved and Bosel second is, is that correct or, oh, wait, Watson's seconded. Is that correct? Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, uh, when they call your name, please say yes, no, or abstain. Zane?
Hi.
Watson? Bosel?
Hi.
Nagaji?
Hi.
Fukamoto?
Hi.
Lumen?
Hi.
Lee?
Hi.
Poff?
Hi.
Chong?
Hi.
Moylan?
Hi.
Kewanu?
Hi.
Fox? Robert Fox? Mouschrecky?
Hi.
And James? DeMarco?
Uh, Jason DeMarco.
Oh, Jason, oh, sorry. Uh, Jason DeMarco?
No worries. I abstained.
Okay.
You forgot me again. Chong, hi.
Okay. Uh, that's one. Well, thirteen, that's thirteen. I am one abstained. The motion passes. The resolution is adopted with amendments.
At this time, I'm gonna hand the meeting back to Chair Nagaji.
Uh, thank you, uh, Bosel. Uh, thank you everyone for the discussion and the vote. Um, I had some talks with community members who suggested that maybe it was best to um, put it off to a later month. So that's why I I'd uh, raise it, but uh, thank you for uh, correcting me on that so we could get it out uh, sooner rather than later. Um, quick question for Anson. What's that?
Can we finish the agenda now?
Yes, I need to ask Anson a question. Um, since I was chair, but um, when he was acting chair, which one of us is responsible for getting the printed signs into the NCO?
Well, you, were you? He created the the resolution, so it's best for you to do the corrections.
Alright, thank you for saying that.
Yeah, and get it to Anson.
Alright, um, yep, getting us back on track with the agenda. Uh, we're going to item four B, or excuse me, four C. That's approval of the June twenty-fourth meeting minutes. We have a motion to approve the June twenty-fourth meeting minutes. Okay, um, I'm gonna count that as a motion from uh, Moylan and second from Member Watson. Do we have any objections to approval of the uh, minutes? Uh, Diane Chong, I see you raised hand. Is that an objection?
No, it's not an objection. I want to make sure that I'm on the list every time Anson calls the roll call. I'm not on that list.
Uh, yeah, Anson, please say, say that in addition to our last name, because I think it kind of sounds.
If there's no objections, minutes are so approved.
Yes, minutes are approved. Alright, next item.
Member Watson, I I believe, can I just speak really quickly? Diane, I think that you're often hearing um, Anson say Tom when he is saying Chong. So, Anson, can you just in future always say the member Chong's full name so that we can?
Just say Diane.
Okay, I'll say Diane next time.
Thank you.
Alright, so minutes are passed. No one objected. We have the motion. No one objected. Minutes are passed. Next, we are on to update on the primary urban center development plan. Do we have an update on the primary urban center development plan?
Yes, um, I forwarded to Anson and he said to all of you that pri- there's a a series of um, meetings. Next one is at Kalani High School. I think on. August twelfth. All the board members got a copy of that, so you can attend that.
All right, we have half an hour left, but Tom Heinrich, I see a hand up, so.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Just for clarification, also in the chat.
It's at Kaimuki High School, not Kalani, and it's this coming Monday, the twelfth.
Yes, thank you very much, folks. Six P M to seven thirty P M, Kaimuki High School Auditorium, twenty seven oh five Kaimuki Avenue. And AI, as as a point of personal privilege, can everyone please be recognized by the chair before speaking? This is getting very aggravated. Thank you.
Okay. Anything further on update on the primary urban center development plan? If not, we are moving on. Seeing, hearing, nothing further for this. So now we move to update on the no banning court. Do we have anything on the no banning court? Update us on.
I will add something very briefly. I heard a rumor that some folks thought that the sewer application had been approved. As far as I know, I contacted DPP. I guess it was last week, mid last week, and that is not the case. They are still waiting on the, this is just the renewed application, and they have not had any any other things as of mid last week. So nothing has been submitted yet as far as a final DEA.
All right, any further comments or questions on that item? If not, we're going to the next one, which is update on all of Y flood mitigation. Go ahead.
But Chair, this is Member Fukamoto. In the last two, I haven't heard anything. So if anyone else has something to go ahead, but I have not heard anything further. And so the Army Corps is just working on its EIS right now. Thank you.
Okay, um, and we have item five A, Department of Transportation bus remodelification. So we have someone who can speak to that very quickly.
He's here.
Yes, hello. Hi, hello, I'm Kent Yang. I'm with the Department of Transportation Services. I have a short presentation, I promise, above the recent changes that will be happening on August eighteenth of this month. These are some bus modifications for routes. Uh, okay, so Anson put it up. Are you sharing your screen? Okay, are you able to see this, everyone?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, next slide, please. Oh, that's not the one. Okay, there you go. Okay, so the main changes that will happen in the Manoa area is the Route eighteen and twenty four because they're interlying routes. That means that the Route eighteen becomes a twenty four once it reaches Kapo Hulu. Um, so it will be discontinued. The reason for this is that resources. Oh, yeah, next one, please. So this is eighteen, just to show that it goes to Manoa. And as I was saying, the the reason why it's being discontinued is because we're trying to reduce the redundancy of routes that go to the same places. Specifically, in UH Manoa, there's a lot of buses that already go there. As you can see, I've listed there. Um, they all go there. And then so we're trying to reallocate resources to provide better, more reliable service, more services within the hour for our other routes. So that's why we're doing that. And so you see the the map, that's the black zigzag lines is Route eighteen and where it goes, and it shares the same route with all these other bus routes. Next one, please. And here is the full route. As you can see, as I said before, multiple route lanes that share the same destinations, similar times, only the Route eighteen is only once an hour, whereas our other routes are more frequent. So they give that option to passengers to take different times of the service that they they need to to get to their destinations. Okay, next one, please. And so Route eighteen will be discontinued. Those are the alternate routes listed. They go to all similar locations that the Route eighteen previously go. Next one, please. And the twenty four as well, similar locations. We we thought about it, what other options are for riders, and these are the other options. And so what we did to alert to our riders and to the the neighborhood board, specifically the Manoa Board, is that the the bus stops that service these two routes have rider alerts posted. And this, and I shared this with Chair's Chairperson Zane with and your city council members. So everyone's getting this. And then the bus drivers are also handing this out to all riders with all the details of what's happening and what routes they can take. All right, next one. So if there's any more questions, I'm awaiting your concerns and questions here. You can also email me here and feel free to call me as well. But yes, please let me know your your questions, please.
And I'll just and I'm going to easily see the roster of people. Thank you. Um, I see your hand raised from Member Kewan. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your presentation. Is there an app on the phone where it shows the routes and what time arrived?
Oh, yes. Yes, yes. So we have a QR code here, if you can see. You scan that QR code, it will take you to our website where you can see the schedules and all the changes. An app for the bus we do is called the Bus App. You can look that at the App Store or Google Play. Um, it's an okay app, but we highly recommend Google to plan out your routes. But what's good about the bus app is that you can see in real time if your bus is coming like at at this moment and what time it's coming.
All right, any further questions or comments from board members or from members of the community? Good hearing and seeing none. Thank you for the presentation on the bus modifications. Uh, we're moving. Uh, we're moving to community concerns, and they'll be first item A. The no parking zone at the intersection of Oahu Avenue and Kaola Street. Um, and I believe this is that Mitchell He is, and you can speak to it.
Yeah, actually, it's Michael He. Uh, yeah, I live. Yeah, I live on the corner of Oahu Avenue and Kaola Street on the Diamond Head Ocean side. Um, there's one legal parking space to the left of my driveway, and a telephone pole that has a no parking sign is as the road enters the intersection going into Midpac. Uh, during the day, you know, Oahu Avenue is speed down Oahu Avenue. The place is pretty congested. Lot of cars encroach on the intersection. But the problem we have is that although one legal car can park there, invariably a car parks behind it and makes it difficult to see as we get out of our driveway. Even worse, sometimes a car parks in front of that, approaching into that intersection. So when people make the turn to the right, they're approaching the car coming head on. We like that parking space there. The problem is, we've been going for years trying to work with people to try and find a way to keep that because we use it sometimes, but it's gotten to the point where you know, I think it's safer just to get rid of it, both for us getting out of our driveway and the people making that right turn when it's really congested. And it's congested every morning and every afternoon and a good part of the day. So I asked for your endorsement to propose to the Department of Transportation Services.
Yes, thank you, Michael He. So I want to ask, and this is for for Anson and or Tom Heinrich, given Mr. He's situation. Is this something that our board has any purview over? Can we write anything to anyone to help them remedy this? Is it within our powers or jurisdiction?
So. Okay, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, yes, it's absolutely the type of issue that the neighborhood board input is very useful on. Uh, it's been a while since I've seen Michael, but I know his spouse, who is a former member of this board. Uh, literally, we've worked on this issue at that location for years and years. Uh, so Chair, I'd be happy to work with you and Michael He in terms of what the a short letter would be or a short resolution for consideration by the board at the next meeting, because there are other issues in that block and a half. But again, let's keep that clarity on that one location at the southeast corner of Oahu and Kaola T intersection. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Tom. Yeah, I'll follow up with the, I mean, yep, Mr. He, go ahead.
It was actually the DTS that gave me that list of of names to go and collect signatures on. And it's them who asked me to come to the board for the endorsement, so it could be taken back to them. They're the one who initiated this.
Okay, thanks. Since we're running low on time, I'm going to cut discussion on this, and I'll follow up with Tom Heinrich and Mr. He outside the meeting to figure something out hopefully for next meeting. Um, so we're moving next to pickleball noise at Manoa Valley District Park. Um, I know that Robert Zane put this on the agenda at the request of a community member. Oh, I see your hand from Ed. Go ahead.
Hello.
We can hear you.
Yep, we can hear you. If you're the person who requested it, go ahead.
Okay, I'm just waiting to see if my video. Oh, maybe. Maybe my video will come up in a second. There, maybe.
It's up now.
Okay, great. Hi, everyone. Nice to meet you. I've never spoken to the board before, but I've been talking a lot to various agencies, starting with DOH, who has responsibility for enforcing the noise ordinance, which pickleball somewhat meets because of the impulsive noise that it makes, creating a very memorable, shall we say, impression on your ears. Um, similar to like the beeping of a truck that backs up or a car alarm or maybe crying. Um, it's something that's really hard to ignore. And it reaches about seventy decibels at our property lines, just near the Manoa Valley District Park tennis courts. Um, and we're two hundred feet away. Um, the general recommendation around the country is pickleball courts not be located within five hundred feet of residences. And so after talking to DOH and the city council folks as well as HPD and Parks and Recreation, they're all asking that the board draft a resolution allowing the Parks and Recreation to ban pickleball from that location. And find other locations where pickleball can be played that don't violate the noise ordinance.
All right, thank you, Ed. Do we, oh, I see your hand on Anson Wu's screen. Go ahead.
Uh, yes. Question for the speaker. So the park was designed with these tennis courts, you know, two hundred feet away from residences. Is pickleball a lot noisier than tennis?
Can I answer that, please?
Yeah, I was hoping to.
Yes, please go ahead. Go ahead, Anson.
Yes. Okay, well, I hopefully got all the materials that I submitted, but, um, yes, briefly. If tennis is about forty decibels as well as volleyball and basketball that have been played there and have not caused any kind of noise concerns among us for many, many years. Uh, we've been living peacefully with that. Um, it's only when pickleball started to be played that at seventy decibels compared to forty decibels is not just almost double. Each ten decibels represents twice as much noise. That means it's eight times louder. It's eight times louder than anything that was there before. Tennis, basketball, and volleyball.
Is it the wooden paddles? Is that what does it? Is it when the ball's being hit?
It's the hard paddles hitting a hard plastic ball. And some players hit also against the concrete wall when they're just playing by themselves. And not everyone plays only in the volleyball courts two hundred feet away. Some people play as close as fifty feet away on the very last tennis court closest to our homes. They're also taking over the basketball courts recently. Um, there can be because there are no rules and DPR has nothing to enforce. Pickleball can be played on any or all of the court surfaces, meaning there could be sixty four players playing at once in eighteen different games. And it's just a free for all. There's no rules and DPR actually is asking for for some guidance and and something that they can use to enforce. This not making this kind of a noise nuisance for the neighbors. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ed. Do we have any further very brief questions or comments on this issue? If not, we're going to move on. Okay, uh, we have fifteen minutes. We're gonna lightning round our remaining items.
Excuse me, sorry.
Yes.
Sorry. Can I can I hear like what is the process to get a resolution? That's what the city council asked me to do to come here to get a resolution from.
Follow with me outside the meeting. We're in a time crunch. We should finish this before ten. Robert, Robert Zane can give you my contact information and we can talk.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. So we already talked about Manoa Board in person meeting locations. I'm just going to move over that in the interest of time. I go to city monthly reports. Is the Board of Water Supply Dominic Diaz or anyone on his behalf still here? I suspect they left, but I'll ask in case.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Real quick, um, the Board of Water Supply did post a report inside of the chat earlier during the meeting.
Okay. Uh, BWS monthly report. Uh, they're participating in a water access and affordability survey taking place in communities across the country. They're encouraging the public to fill it. Now through Sunday, September fifteenth, that takes five to ten minutes to complete. Uh, they want our input. And it can be found on their website. So I'm I'm going to move to our main items unless I remember Watson.
Thank you. Um, maybe Anson can send us the report from Board of Water Supply to all the board members or the mail out list that includes community members, please. So we don't have to search for it in the chat. Send it to us by email. Yeah.
Yeah, Chair, Nagachi, I did post everything on to our Google Drive. So after today, I'll post everything on to it.
Um, Anson, I would advise also emailing it because not all the members who are board know how to navigate through the Google Drive. It can be kind of used unfriendly. So if you can, please.
Also, I think other people get the the email as Member Watson was pointing out that also goes to community members. Is that correct? Yeah, so you're getting a wider audience instead of only board members that way.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Moving on, Mayor Rick Blangjordi's representative, Kim Sparland, I see she's here. Please give us your best super fast report.
Super fast. I put a bunch in the in the chat, put in the mayor's newsletter. Thank you to council members, Seize's office for including the PUC update, uh, primary urban core update, as you guys talked about a little bit before, so let's skip over that. Um, Parks has reported that the grass was cut at Manoa Valley District Park, and the staff will continue to maintain maintain the area. Unfortunately, no updates in spite of multiple tries on the the last stream cleaning for the three major areas um, of typical discussion. One thing I didn't add in there because it's just a little bit wonky to try and put in text is I think you guys should have heard our issues that we're having with the trash trucks. And, you know, we have a fleet of over a hundred. Normally, we're down to less than half of that. The good news is supply chains are starting to move, so we have received two. We just keep in mind, we have not received any of our normal eleven orders, eleven per year, uh, over the last four years. So that's why the backlog, right? So as these machines are are getting old and and having as much duct tape put on, put to them as we can. Um, just they're having to be taken out of commission. So we've gotten two. We're expected to get another five by the end of this calendar year with another five and and then some rolling forward to hopefully get us caught up. Unfortunately, contracts were just canceled. Um, we're a low man on the totem pole when you're when you're ordering what sounds like a lot to us for trash trucks, but in the big scale of things are not. So it's the only thing I didn't put in there. I apologize. Um, I think the other thing I'd like to point out because it did come up as a topic. Uh, if we can scroll back up, you guys have a chance to look at the link that I put in there for the resource mapping that HPD uh, and has created so that you can see where these incidents are and you can learn a little bit more about them. So you don't have to wait to these monthly meetings. So that being said, I also noted the community concerns around the illegal parking zone, the pickleball noise, and will try and keep my eyes on that as it moves through the process and open it up for questions.
All right, I see your hand from Member Watson. We'll do that and then we'll. All right, I see a raise hand from Member Watson, we'll do that, and then we'll move on to the next item. Go ahead.
Hi, uh, Kim, thank you, uh, thank you Chair. Um, I just wanted to, I guess I don't really know how to contact, uh, the mayor much, so couldn't just convey to him that I really appreciated that he granted a meeting to some of us about, uh, discussions of the Alaway project. Um, that we had kind of wanted the Oceanette plan, if it was viable, and I wanted to really, uh, thank him for, I guess I found him really calm and quiet, and actually soft-spoken and listening, and wanted to hear new things, not the same old kind of talking points, and I really respected that. And, uh, we provided him with that, and I did get, um, the, the questions from Jeff Herzog from Army Corps and forward them to Oceanette, that those were the kinds of things the mayor needed answers to, and, uh, I did my best to facilitate that. But I thought, uh, I found him really listening and really quiet, and and he wasn't anchored to any one position, he just wants to solve the flood mitigation project by any viable means, and I really respected that, so I wanted, uh, you to thank him, and, and I think he's doing a good job as mayor, and uh, he'll probably get another chance at being mayor for a while. I expect he'll probably win the election, and, and rightly so, so, um, from my position, I just wanted to, you just share that with him, I, I have no connection to him, so I have no way of sharing that, but pass it along, thank you.
I would, I will gladly pass that along, and, um, thank you, he, we had a cabinet meeting this morning, so I'm going on hour 14 here, but, um, we're, we're honored to serve our community, we're happy to see the changes are being made. Not telling you how to vote, just saying make sure you vote, so, thank you.
All right, thanks, Kim, moving on, and we have eight minutes, so, uh, probably not uh, going to have time for any discussion, but if, uh, Councilman Sees or his representative is here, do you have a very quick report to share with us?
Sure, aloha, this is Poor from Councilmember Sees' office. Um, thank you so much for your time, I have a really brief report. Um, Councilmember's, uh, monthly August newsletter is in the chat, and I will also send that to Anson, so that he can email everyone. Um, there's also some important chat, uh, important links in, um, that I put in the chat, and I will email that also to Anson. The main thing is to just remind everybody, again, this is, I think, the third time, um, in this meeting, but join us for the urban, uh, primary urban center development, uh, plan meeting. We invite you to participate in the upcoming primary urban center develop, um, development plan meeting, the event will focus on areas from Alamoana through Kahala area. The date is Monday, August 12th, 2024. From 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM, the location is Kai Mooki High School Auditorium. And for more information, there is another link, so I will send that to Anson as well. Um, the bus route modification was just, um, in a presentation, but there is a link to it that I will send to Anson. Um, and then just a reminder, the curb ramp project, the City and County Honolulu Department of Design and Construction is advising the public that the curb ramp project at various locations on Oahu will begin April 1st, 2024, and will work all the way through October, 2024. Um, so that's my report, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to help.
Sir, I'm not going to open up for discussion, we, we got to move on to, in time. Thank you for, uh, the presentation. Oh, let's go to Senator Karel Fukunaga, if she or her representative is present. Senator Fukunaga? I see the Senator, uh, camera is not, oh, there she is.
Please go. Sorry, can you hear me? Okay, in the interest of time, I just wanted to, uh, highlight that Hawaiian Electric is going to be performing some utility work on Manoa Road tomorrow. I'm sorry, on Friday, and the, um, the time is between 8:30 and 2:30 PM, they will be replacing some utility poles, and so the roadway will be closed in both directions between Ventura Street and Aleo Place. Traffic will be rerouted onto Ferdinand Avenue, and access to Manoa Road via Gorway will also be restricted, so, um, I know that that is a very, very busy road, so just kind of wanted to get the word out, we are also letting people in the neighborhood know. Happy to answer question, well, no questions, please move on.
All right, Senator and Representative Andrew Tukwia Garrett is the representative, or, um, oh, I see him here, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm here, uh, good evening, everyone, uh, just real quickly, congrats to the new officers, appreciate your service to the community. Uh, this Saturday, um, I am co-sponsoring a workshop with Be Ready Manoa for the Community Emergency Response Team, the CERT team. Um, I, in the last few minutes here, I'll try to put the RSVP number in, but it is a free workshop to learn skills on how to help, uh, you and your, uh, neighbors, uh, in the event of an emergency. Again, that's this Saturday, um, Manoa at Seventh Adventist Church, I believe it's from 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon. Lunch will be provided, so hope to see some of you folks there, and, uh, I guess, I'm not going to take any questions, it's running out of time, but, and thank you for the lively discussion earlier today on the St. Francis Project.
I think you're representative and Senator for, uh, sticking with us to the very end of the meeting. Uh, is Elmer Kai still here?
Yes, I am, Chair.
Uh, report if you can, thanks.
Yeah, very sure, um, the University of Hawaii starts up on August 26th, um, first day of our school. It's like getting busy, August 20th, that's when we have a dorm move-in, um, as well as sporting events starts on the 24th as well, so it will be busier on the Manoa campus, I just wanted to let the Manoa meeting know.
All right, thank you, Elmer, and we'll go to, uh, Lacey Gushi, who's here as the Governor's Representative, do you have a very, uh, brief report for us?
Hi, everyone, so I posted the link to Governor's Newsletter in the chat. Um, in the newsletter, you can find information about, um, 253 bills that were signed into law last month, um, as well as, um, it's, as we all know, tomorrow marks the one-year anniversary since the Maui wildfires, so there's also a list of remembrance events. Um, again, you can find more information in the link posted to the chat, thank you.
Thank you, and do we have any from Congressman Ed Case's office? Going once, going twice, okay. Uh, that's it, we know, we're just going to go to our earnings announcements, uh, so first, Friends of the Library Book Sale is going to be Saturday, September 14th, uh, 2024, uh, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and Sunday, September 15th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Our next meeting will be, uh, held, uh, remotely, as this one was, with an in-person location, a couple on the Holiday Conference Room, 153, for those who don't have internet capabilities. And there will be, although we broadcasts on the second and fourth Saturdays of the month at 3:00 PM, or every third Tuesday at 9:00 PM, or online on, at the Odella website. So, do we have a, uh, motion to adjourn?
I make the motion to adjourn.
Chair, it looks like Vice Chair, uh, Secretary.
Zane's making X with his arms, what, what does that mean?
Elton needs to have, make a quick announcement about that Friends of the Library thing, Elton has raised.
Thank you, the only thing is, um, the Friends of the Library Book Sale will be held at the Manoa Library site, thank you.
Okay, thank you, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, you don't need a motion.
You don't need a motion.
All right, in that case.
Also.
You're the man.
Ms. Shrecky's hand raised.
Uh, sure, Ms. Shrecky, go, and then we're going to adjourn.
Oh, sorry, I think that was a mistake, I, my apologies.
All right, any last minute comments that are a minute or less? All right, seeing and hearing none, meeting is over, we are adjourned. I'll see everyone, uh, the first Wednesday of next month. Thank you, everyone, bye.